Good evening, everybody. I just want to welcome you all. Our interim superintendent just said something to me that I think is very profound, and I just want to share it with you. She said, "Kids change the feeling in this room." I feel like we could all just go home now. Like that, and so we're just really glad to see this full room of kids and families. So let's get into it. Kansas, we do the roll call, please. McCoy?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Becker? I think Andrew will be joining us very shortly. Lyerly?
Here.
Okay. We also are joined at the table by two of our Intercity Student Council members. Can you go ahead and introduce yourselves?
I'm Jennifer Duarte Castillo, and I'm Secretary Treasurer of Intercity Student Council.
I'm Amelia Bassett Jones, and I'm just a member of Intercity Student Council.
Not just. Welcome. Okay. Let's see. The first thing on our agenda tonight, and something we're all really looking forward to, is a performance from the Chapel Show Choir. I don't know if someone would like to go ahead and introduce them. Can you talk into a microphone so the people watching can hear you? Hit the little face.
All right, I'm on. I'm Chris Warden, and I'm the principal at Chapel Elementary. We are an international baccalaureate primary years program. As you know, Amelia can tell how wonderful we are, right? Amelia was a student of ours as well. We are excited to be here this evening. As PYP students, it is important for our students to be very well-rounded, and music is part of that, to show their design process and open another part of their world. And so we have our Chapel Star Power, who I know this is going to be glaring. This is the award-winning Chapel Show Choir. And, yep. They are the only elementary show choir to ever enter a competition in the state of Wisconsin. And so we got a very large award for that, and we are very proud of that. So, and there is hours of work that the kids have put in, along with our IB coordinator, Mrs. Bristow, and the director, Mr. Flogel. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flogel, and thank you for having us this evening.
You're really short. My name is Kevin Flogel, and I am the Director of Star Power and the Music Teacher at Chapel. This group started with a boot camp before school even started, for three days for them to meet each other and to become true leaders of our school and to be leaders in music class. They give up their recess voluntarily every week on Mondays, and it was kind of funny, for a couple of weeks this month, we couldn't have show choir because I was teaching a different unit at the same time. But they're like, "When do we get to have show choir again?" So it was good that they actually missed having it. So tonight, they're going to first show you a short demonstration of what we have just begun learning. They've only had two rehearsals on bucket drumming, which we're going into at the end of the year. We will have our May Mayhem Concert at Chapel outside. And then after they show you their short drum demonstration, they'll perform their closing medley called "I Love Rock and Roll" that they did at the competition.
Thank you.
Thank you for... Anybody who is a parent, a grandparent, a sibling, could you just stand up, please? Thank you for sharing your children with us tonight. It's very appreciated.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. We're just... Yeah. Yes, that'd be great. We're just going to give them a moment to exit before we continue. Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda. The next thing is our public forum. We have two speakers. The first is, I think, going to be calling in? Okay. Okay. Hello, Michelle, can you hear us? Are you on mute? Hello? Michelle, if you can hear us, I believe you're on mute. Hello?
On mute? Star... Star six? Yeah, star six, if you're accidentally muted and you push star six, we might be able to hear you, if you're on.
She is on, though, Josh. Okay. Michelle, I don't know if you can hear us, but we can't hear you. We can maybe try you back. We'll move on to the next person. I think probably we should do that. I'm sorry it's not working out, but we can try you back in a couple of minutes. Okay. The next person is... Beth Von? Oh, yes. Come on up to the podium. You have... State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Is this already on? Can you hear me?
Yes. Is it... It's not on?
It's not on?
No. Just get a little closer to it, try it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, very good.
Can you hear me now? Well, before I start, I'm going to guarantee you I'm not going to be as entertaining as the group that was just here, so don't have low expectations.
It's at a high bar.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board tonight. My name is Beth Van. I live at 131 South Buchanan Street in Green Bay, on the west side of town. I'm on the corner of Buchanan and Caroline Street. And our specific issue today, I'm here representing some neighbors, but is the parents picking up children on Caroline Street, which runs parallel to Lincoln Grade School. This has been a long, longstanding issue that continues to get worse. I have a couple of outlined issues to talk about specifically. Parents are parking on the street even though it's clearly lined all the way up and down the street, no parking on the street. These parents began to park as early as 3:00 PM, waiting for their kids for up to an hour, an hour and a half, while they're on the phone or doing whatever. They also park on both sides of the streets. Caroline is 25 feet wide, okay? So, and I have pictures and handouts for everybody after. Once you get two cars on both sides of the street, there's barely room for anybody to get through going one way or the other. So it's blocking traffic from people coming from Buchanan, trying to get on Caroline, and then vice versa. It's a horrible situation. Frequently, they also double park. So they're also on one side of the street, and then they park there. So now there's no room at all in the street whatsoever. They have no consideration for us, the homeowners. Very bad situation. They block our driveways. They also park in the driveway. There's a couple of situations where one of my neighbors went out and asked somebody to move their vehicle so he could get out of his driveway. The guy got out of the car and started a fistfight. Okay? I have personally not been able to get out of my driveway on a number of occasions because people are not in my driveway, but blocking my driveway. When you ask them to move, they don't. They either ignore you or say many four-letter words to you and continue to stay where they're staying. It's very rare that on occasion a parent will actually move. We have had many attempts to resolve this issue over the years. The police have been called on a number of occasions. They'll occasionally drive through, but nothing really seems to happen. We have talked to the principal at Lincoln Grade School over the years, a number of times, every single year. He is unwilling to do much of anything, although he claims he sends out a letter to parents at the beginning of every school year. It's not working. He has been asked by his crossing guards to put cones out in the street to prevent the things that are happening. He refuses. The crossing guards have actually tried to escalate the situation, and it has gone nowhere. I've even had the crossing guards come to my house when I've been outside to say that they apologize for the situation, that they're trying to do things, but they can't get anybody to move on it. So in closing, really, I just want to say all of our collective efforts, and this is a number of neighbors. I'm just representing the neighborhood because some people were working and couldn't make it here tonight, including my husband, and it's probably a good thing he's not here. Just saying that, too. The sad part of this is the behavior that's exhibited by these parents. Okay, they're doing it with their kids in the car. These are the people that should be role models for these children, and they're not. They're absolutely not. As homeowners and taxpayers, we want and need to have this issue resolved. We believe we should have the right to get out of our own driveways when we need to. I've already had to go to an appointment or something and had to drive over my grass and down the curb to get there because I had no other choice. We believe the school should have a safe designated drop-off and pickup area other than on Caroline Street. It's not just... It's just not designed for that. And with the potential of Tancor other schools merging into Lincoln School at some point when school closings take place, this nightmare will become unbelievably horrible. So respectively, we are asking you, the board, to investigate this and to help us get our concerns addressed and resolved. I have my name and address and phone number and email address on this. Basically, in closing, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Should I leave these where they're just on the table?
Yes, please. Josh, do we want to try Michelle again? Thank you.
I just want to say that it's really bad in the winter, especially with the snow and stuff that these people don't move.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Sorry? Okay. Do we have her, Josh? Is she on? Michelle, can you hear us? Hello, Michelle, can you hear us? Are you... Can you unmute yourself? Michelle, if you can hear us. It looks like this isn't going to work. I would suggest maybe taking whatever it was you're hoping to say tonight and send it perhaps in an email to the board, and that way we'll have your testimony. Really sorry. All right. We're going to have to move on, I'm afraid. Next, we have under education, a presentation by David Johns.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Thanks again. I appreciate this opportunity to spend some time with you this afternoon, evening, around two of our four strategic pillars. The four strategic pillars help us organize our work, help us focus our efforts. And as tonight's presentation unfolds, it'll focus on the two areas of academic excellence and thriving workforce. So today, again, as stated, my purpose is to share with you some actions that have been taken from this school year. And in speaking about the school, you're really talking about from the summer months up until this very point in time, both around the area of academic excellence and the area of thriving workforce. What I'll be sharing with you tonight is not exhaustive. It is not the full story of both of these. It's the start of conversations that ought to continue, ought to bring more voices to the table, ought to include more qualitative and quantitative data to really tell the full and complex picture of what it looks like for student success and staff success within our district. So let's begin with academic excellence. I want to start with a quote from Lacy Robinson, the founder of the Unbound Ed organization, who is someone who we're looking to to really help influence and learn from around the importance of equitable instruction. Lacy Robinson says, "Justice is in the details of teaching and learning. It's not separate. It's not unrelated. It's not unconnected. As we work to do right by our students and recognize that education is social justice, we also do it through understanding how we can serve our students even more effectively in the classroom." So for this academic excellence update tonight, I'm going to break it down into a few different categories for you. I'm going to start with this idea of student sense of belonging, and then we'll look at some student achievement on grade level standards. You'll have an opportunity to see the way that we recognize where our gaps are in our system among our different demographic groups of students and what we're doing to address those gaps. And then this final piece is highlighted in green because that's our mission as an organization. I'll share with you some data that ultimately is about our success in graduating students college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. The sources of the data that I'll share with you this afternoon come from our own district achievement data represented through Wise Dash, Panorama, Mastery Connect, Lexia Core 5, and Edge Annuity. My choice in highlighting these data platforms are that these are the tools that we actually have in our teachers' hands and in our building's hands to be able to make informed decisions, often real-time. And you'll see what that data looks like and how our teachers and leaders are able to access that. So let's start with sense of belonging. This is the foundation where it all begins. The meaningful relationships between students and adults. Learning actually cannot happen if these relationships aren't in place. So just this year, we've begun surveying our students through something called the Panorama SEL Student Survey. Millions of students around the country contribute to this data set. It's normed against national responses to these questions. And what I'm highlighting for you today are the SEL survey results around the first three questions that are asked. This is our composite district data for our third through fifth graders. The SEL survey is given to third through 12th graders. We have a 95.4 response rate. It's one of the early successes we had this year with our district goals was to make sure that every one of our students had an opportunity to weigh in. I'm hoping that both of you had an opportunity. They look at this and like, "Oh, we answered questions about that." Yeah, so we have a set of questions that are asked of our third through fifth graders, and then a different set of questions, related but different set of questions that are asked for our sixth through 12th graders. And thousands of our students have weighed in on what it's like to be a student in our district and what their experiences as learners are. So it begins here, and just sharing this data snapshot with you. Thanks to Claudia Hendrickson and her team in Pupil Services. Not only do we have this data, we have a growing partnership with the Panorama organization to help us with the tools that sit behind these numbers. So if, for example, we were looking at a data point in any of the questions that were asked, and we thought, "Boy, we really should be higher than that." What does it mean that our students are telling us this? There's a toolkit behind each set of questions that allow teachers, teacher teams, building teams to access some things that are right at their fingertips that they might want to try within their school. So increasingly, when we talk about school improvement, and we talk about achievement and academics, this has to be that third leg of conversation. This has to be that critical foundational piece. Let's ensure that our students are finding meaning and purpose and a sense of belonging in their schools so that we can teach them at the highest levels that we know we can. So I wanted to start our academic excellence update with you around something that is incredibly foundational to learning, and that's our student sense of belonging. We'll repeat this survey with our students again in the spring, and each year you have that pre and post. And typically, schools like to identify the spring data point to set some goals for the following year around. And again, those toolkits give them some of the resources that they need to take action on this. Let's take a look here at mathematics. And again, a comprehensive update on academic excellence would include data across all grade bands, all student groups, as it relates to our district goals. So really, for this afternoon, we're zooming in on a couple of areas because, again, what I want to do is showcase some of the tools that we're using so that staff in our building are completely clear on the progress that our students are making. So here's some evidence of student achievement on grade level standards in sixth grade math. This is making use of the Mastery Connect platform. One of the very first board meetings I attended before I came on board as a staff member was a meeting where you all approved the purchase of Mastery Connect and Canvas. It's a partnership. Mastery Connect is the... is related with Canvas, all under the Instructure platform. But what Mastery Connect allows us to do is embed really quick assessments for students that are part of the Canvas version of the class that they're already using within their classroom. And so a teacher can create short, three-question, four questions. Sometimes we call them exit slips in the field, formative assessments. And then we can also embed at different times in the year some question sets that give us an idea of how our students are tracking toward the grade level standards for that class. And so what we have in Mastery Connect is the opportunity to look at a visual three times a year in relation to where we want our students to be at the end of the year. So the last point on this slide highlights our district goal for mathematics. At the start of the year, the education team looked at a three-year trend of data and identified a SMART goal as an 8% percentage increase for all students in mathematics based on a promising trend in math achievement and a 10% increase for Black students as we looked at our student group where gaps were widening over the years. So keep those numbers in mind when I share this trend data with you. I'll also say about Mastery Connect is that it is a great opportunity to study the work of assessment and predictability in real-time. And so what we have with Mastery Connect is something that is important for students to participate in so we can continue the study of what is this actually telling us about where we want our students to be at the end of the year. So it continues to be a work in progress, but because of its efficiency and because it's built into the tools that teachers are using in their classroom, we're able to get the student responses in a significant enough number that we're able to really study how are our students tracking toward grade level success by the end of the year. We had about a 75% participation rate, and I'll show you what that data looks like. The next slide's going to have a lot of bar graphs, but I promise you I'll take a little time to talk through them. Last year, this shows our seventh grade. This shows our seventh grade now over two interim assessments, one that was done. In the fall, really to identify a baseline for learners to start the year. And one that was done in in January essentially to capture a midpoint. Taking you back to our goals and why we identified the goals that we did last year, twenty-five point three percent of our sixth graders were proficient in mathematics as measured by the forward exam at the end of the year. Four point seven of our black sixth graders were proficient in mathematics as measured by the forward exam at the end of the year. Achievement gap between all students. And black students in sixth grade was twenty point six percentage points. So those are the things that are on our mind when we look at interim assessment results and we look at evidence of whether we're closing those gaps. So what you see on these bar graphs are the story of two interim assessments. And what I'll ask you to do is track from the yellow arrow to the yellow arrow and then the blue arrow to the blue arrow. The graph that's not labeled with an arrow is all students. But when you're really looking to the impact that you have on achievement gaps, you have to remove the student group. From the all group of students that you're comparing it to. So the yellow. Arrow points to all of our students. And not our black students. And our blue arrow identifies our black students in seventh grade who participated in the interim assessments. So what we see here is. From the first to the second. We increased from twenty-six percent of our students. Showing mastery of the standards to thirty-two percent. Those are all students that do not include our black students. And we move from twenty-three percent of our black students in seventh grade to twenty-six percent of our black students in seventh grade. This is that zoom in look at. Assessments that are used across the district in common. That are aligned to the standard for the subject area. So while this, and the reason why I say this is a work in progress, I tell you last year that this same group of students who were our sixth graders last year. Only four point seven of our black students that took the forward exam were proficient on it. So we are, we are seeing a different story represented through this data. And I would tell you that the experience in the field and the feedback from teachers is that through the curriculum that we're using. With our middle school students and the level of engagement and social learning that is happening. Through the problem-based approach of of middle school math, of mid-school math. Our teachers are reporting that our students are making gains that are accelerated beyond what they're used to seeing. That's anecdotal. This is some additional evidence that shows that we're making some moves in mathematics, looking at seventh grade. Sixth grade shows a little bit flatter trend, but the the starting point is higher than where our forward exams. Had our previous fifth grader scoring last year. But this is what a teacher and a teacher team can work with when they look at interim assessment data. And this is the story of seventh grade math. Lexia Core Five. You're going to hear a little bit about this later as it's part of our comprehensive. Approach to improving and increasing students' ability to read on grade level. In elementary, there's also some applications for it in a little bit different form for middle school as well. We're currently working in three schools with Lexia Core Five. And it's part of the everyday core instruction for our students. It's about fifteen to eighteen minutes of daily instruction for students. It is computer-based and it's adaptive. So how a student gets. A student gets to a certain point on one day, the next day, it gives them something that is responsive to the work they did on the day before. So. If you have eighteen students in a classroom, it's very likely that you have eighteen students at eighteen different points. Coupled with the dashboard for a teacher to be able to see all of that in real time. And also look at trends for what are pockets of the class achieving at similar times? What 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 could I maybe say about these ten students? That might help me if I'm going to do some small group instruction or pull them aside for some reinforcement. That's the advantage of the real-time instruction or the real-time feedback that you get from Core Five. Act Twenty calls out explicitly the importance and the need for interventions for students who are below grade level. Lexia would be an example of the type of intervention that would be common and universal. And what we're doing is really experimenting and testing, how might it work in classrooms as part of core instruction? And the reason why we're using it in core instruction is that our reading success throughout the district. Is such that in most classrooms, most of our students are not reading at grade level. In most classrooms, most of our students are not reading at grade level. And to and to only work with the lowest of the lowest readers is not serving all students. We'll reach a point where that's not the case, but right now we need to see our intervention directed toward most of our students. Twenty-four point four percent of our third graders were proficient in reading on the forward exam last year. Thirteen point four percent of our black third graders were proficient. With a gap of eleven percentage points. Our goal for this year for reading proficiency is an increase by five percentage points for all students. And a corresponding increase of ten percent for black students. Just to hit on that gap again. The purpose behind having a different target for success is so that over approximately a three-year period, we can eliminate that gap. We have to raise the bar and close the gap simultaneously. We can't stop everything, focus on one group of students and think that the work we're going to do, support them is going to support all students. We can do both things at the same time, and I believe that our tools are going to be really important to help us do that. So here's what you get as far as a readout. In Core Five. Now remember, this is an intervention-based program and it's adaptive, so students work at their own pace through it. So first I'll call your attention to, first of all, this is in the three buildings where we are, we are trying this. This is all students, all K five students. We have. Nine hundred and eighty-eight students currently working in Core Five. When they started through some pre-assessments that are part of it. Approximately sixteen percent of students were already demonstrating grade level reading ability. As we've progressed with it and these three schools entered in at a little bit different time, each of them. So this isn't scientifically tight data, but it certainly does reveal that spending some time with. An adaptive intervention during the school day. Does expand the growth of students reading at grade level. And so here we see. Twenty-three percent of students at grade level or above grade level. Currently who are who are among these nine hundred and eighty-eight. The chart on the right is also some informative data for teachers, teacher teams. And school leadership teams, and it involves the usage. It's like anything else. If you simply have it, you know, the treadmill that sits in my basement. I can attribute that to my level of fitness. I have to actually use it. And so we have the ability to pull data around students that are using it. Less than the approximately fifteen to eighteen minutes daily. And then students who are using it consistent with that benchmark. And so clearly, if you're using it as it's intended and working at the appropriate amount of time. Your advancement in there is. Definitely accelerated. That's a whole bunch. And so I did plan to pause for questions, but I'll take them now too, if you will. Okay, okay. So progression in Core Five is is identified by units. It's kind of an arbitrary designation. It's a chunk of learning. And so that's what that's what we see moving there corresponding with students' commitment to time. Now, why might students not be meeting that time? There's a variety of reasons and a variety of ways that we need to respond. Obviously, if you're not at school, you can't be on Core Five. If. If. You don't have routines in place in the classroom for how this fits into daily instruction. And again, these are, these are three schools that are just starting this, so. I'm fully confident and we have evidence that the more teachers work with this in the classroom, the routines tighten up over time. We have substitutes and guest teachers. It's very challenging for a substitute or guest teacher to walk in a classroom. Where an intervention like this is used and just be able to to put it into action. So there's a variety of things that we need to be paying close attention to, to make sure that we're not doing anything to stand in the way of a student accessing something that is. Showing acceleration for their learning. And here we are with Edge Newity. It was also early in my time coming into this district where the board was discussing Edge Newity as part of our. Much more robust graduation emphasis, Project One Hundred emphasis at the start of the school year. You all were working to mobilize resources and identify the critical priority of making sure that more of our students graduate every year than the year prior. Thanks to the work of Dr. Nancy Chardier and our high school leaders. We now have new tools and a new understanding of tools like Edge Newity to put. One more force in play to help our students graduate. What what we see here with Edge Newity is. Five hundred and twenty-one students across all of our high schools and some of our special programs. Participating in some way in an Edge Newity course. These are high school courses. They are aligned to high school course standards. And of those five hundred and twenty-one students, we're accessing eight hundred and twenty-five different courses. In those courses, our students are spending an average of three hours and six minutes a week in that course material. It's an online course. It's it's proctored and supported externally by teachers and other support staff in the building. This is not go out and do Edge Newity, see you later. This is a relationship that you maintain with adults who are supporting you and your learning. But there is a fair amount of independence and self-directedness that are needed to be successful in 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 Edge Newity, as well as an ability to read. At least grade level reading, because these are grade level courses. Seventy-seven percent overall grade. So Edge Newity courses are built up in more of a competency-based approach. And so when we see percentages in the seventy-seven percents, that's not like total scores. That's not averaging. That's not things like that. That's if there's. If there's a, if there's a hundred markers to meet. Our students who are successfully completing these courses are hitting seventy-seven of those markers. That's an average. Of the eight hundred and twenty-five courses enacted, four hundred and thirty-two of them have completed, which means we have written credits for four hundred and thirty-two. Individual courses that we may not have had a solution for, nor may have there been a motivation for. If we didn't have this as a as a tool to use to take on the challenge of ensuring that each of our students graduates. So this completion percentage isn't like a stop like forty-eight didn't complete. This is, this is live. This is students still working on it. That's just where we are right now, based on the courses that are out there. So I want to share just a few reflections based on some of my observations in the field, and then I'll stop for questions and conversation. So over the last two weeks, and certainly long before that, I've been out in classrooms extensively. I have to admit, it's where some of my best days are are out in classrooms. And in the last two weeks especially, I've I've been out in fourteen different classrooms invited in, in all cases. By teachers who were eager to have guests, eager to share their craft, eager to. Communicate how they were part of the successes and the growth and the progress that I'm sharing with you today. And it all starts there, belief in our teachers that our students can achieve. The grade level, grade level matters and means something. And that while they might not walk in the door, being able to demonstrate grade level. It's the work of each and every member of our school community to help get our kids there. Goals are important. You don't know if you're making progress if you haven't set a target for growth. And so leading into this year with clear SMART goals around. Student participation in S E L, math, reading, attendance. And that aspirational goal of ensuring that every one of our students graduates gives us common language and the and and common things to discuss. When we're out and about and when we're working to support each other, particularly when things get tough. The power of high-quality instructional materials, almost every classroom I was in was a classroom where people were piloting or testing, field testing new materials. And the ability to turn to your materials when you have the question. This is what I'm noticing with my students. What should I do next? And at least having the materials tell you some kind of a path that you might want to follow. Your choice to follow them is your professional choice, but high-quality instructional materials, a hallmark of them is that they contain coherent materials for teachers. To help guide them in their path when they don't know what to do next. And in all of the classrooms that I was in, I saw teachers referencing and working with materials. That supported them with that, including many who said. I did it the way it was written first, and then I thought about what would I do if it was just me and now I knew what I knew. And that ability to personalize and professionalize and tilt toward the art after you've grasped the science of teaching was just magical to see play out in real time. And of course, evidence is everything. Whether you name it as an assessment, whether you name it as fist-to-five, thumbs up, thumbs down. The decisions that we make as educators are grounded in the evidence we have of where are our students right now compared to where we need them to be. And seeing teachers in a variety of ways tap into student evidence so that they could make the next best decision for their kids. Was a powerful takeaway of those classroom visits. And then, of course, it all comes together with instruction. Our teachers engaged in great teaching every day in every classroom. In a super rewarding couple of weeks, being out in buildings and seeing this. So to sum up what I have to share with you about academic excellence, we're making progress. We're making traction. The equitable and excellent student outcomes are clear to us. We can raise the bar and close the gaps at the same time. And we're in a good place to continue that work. I'll stop there.
Thank you. You were talking earlier about usage and does that account for students that leave the district and also leave their school? Would that impact the usage?
Yep, hit your mic there.
First interim and you switch schools or moved. Yeah, I'm not, I can't speak to how sophisticated our system is to follow the student with that. There may be folks here who could do that. I'm not sure. And then also with the the Core Five. Usage dropping over time, that's very much personalized for the student. So if a student, if a student is no longer on the roster of that school, because it, because Lexia talks to infinite campus, they're not going to show up as missing usage because they're no longer there.
So if a student, and if this program expands beyond the number of schools that utilize it, if a student transfers within the district, that information should follow them though, correct?
I could probably turn and get a quick confirmation of, but I think it does. That's a thumbs up from all my friends back there. Yeah, so information follows the student. And again, the the fact that we would invest in something that talks to our student information system is really important to do that.
If another district is using that, does it also follow with their student data or no? I'm seeing a lot of heads shaking now.
We're not sure, but I will tell you that. The whole, the whole point of this is to be adaptive. So should a student arrive from another district? A very quick screener would get them placed appropriately. So. Yes, you know, we could probably dig in and get a little bit of information from a sending district, but in a very short. We would get that student ready to engage at a level that's appropriate for them.
It's kind of ties into when we're talking about boundaries and when we're looking at master plan for the district of. If we're able to increase that geographic footprint of a school, that's going to help alleviate. Students moving out of the district and out of the specifically out of that school's footprint on there, which I would assume would help. This data and help just the consistency of it. So. We're looking at that part two.
David, thank you very much for the update. This update feels like a sampling of data that, can you explain kind of the reasoning? Why you chose this specific data as examples for this update? And is the full data set around achievement available to us? Or was this a effort to compose this day? Because there were a variety of data sources that you use. I'm not intending to place work on the district, but if we can see grades one through twelve or the sample or the. The grades that are applicable, I would appreciate having kind of a more comprehensive view of progress.
Yeah, I would very much appreciate and enjoy preparing that and sharing that. The intention to answer your other question today was to show how. How work is done really at at the school level and at the teacher level to be able to use some of our tools. That are meant to build efficiency in the system to monitor our progress. So they were snapshots and zoom-ins, absolutely. I would absolutely appreciate the opportunity to spend, share comprehensive data with you.
Go ahead, Nancy. So this is a supplement of the H M H like this, or is it part of it?
Lexia exists separate from it. Yep, so it's it it operates on the same. Lexia exists separate from it. Yep. So it's it it operates on the same norming that any high quality curriculum would do as to what grade level looks like across the span of reading. So it's aligned in that way, but it is it is not an HMH product.
So if a child is below grade level and they're working independently. Isn't it kind of just like the leveled reader?
The the passages and the targets for reading that are presented to the students in this sit at a readiness level for the student that is just a touch beyond what their most recent screening or post would have been. So its intention is to stretch a student every single time they engage with it. And that's why it's important for a teacher to be able to check in on what happens in that productive struggle. And some of the usage data might suggest we have students that are know nothing else to do other than give up or stop when when things get challenging. And so teachers being able to read that in the progress that students are making are important.
So if you take fifteen to eighteen minutes out of a class period. That's time taken away from the universal then, correct?
This is this is done universally with all students. But that's correct that what is happening during that time is individualized learning that is it's a it's a strategic bet. It's a strategic bet that if we get more snapshots of real time progress with our students, it will inform whole class and small group instruction better than if we don't have that information.
But when you take like fifteen to eighteen minutes a day, that's a lot of time. Especially like probably third grade compared to like, I think first graders have more literacy time than third graders do. The thing is, is also if you have, if you have a universal curriculum like that, is it Houghton Mifflin Hardcore? Is that an HMH? Okay, so if that's what we use, does it does it align with with the Lexia like with the vocabulary? Is it the same vocabulary? Is it the same types of questioning and things?
I think that's a great question. And what I would ask is when the group comes forward shortly to share the components of the adoption, including Lexi, that's a that's a perfect time. Otherwise, I'm gonna keep turning around and looking at them. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay.
Part two. And to me, it seems fitting as we talk about where we are with our focus on academics. A growing recognition and understanding and awareness of how we respond to the gaps in student achievement that we see throughout our district. To talk about what it means to set our work works up for success for the for the incredibly challenging but rewarding work ahead. With a Lacy Robinson quote about the justice being in the details of teaching and learning. As we talk about thriving workforce. I would put for your consideration this quote from Stephen M. R. Covey. This is the son of Stephen Covey of Seven Habits. Stephen M. R. Covey wrote a book called The Speed of Trust, which has been very influential to me in my life and in my career. And I'll just read it to you. I'm a valued member of a winning team doing meaningful work in an environment of trust. And in Covey's work, he calls on all leaders to ensure that every member of your team can say that sentence truthfully. And it contains a lot of different things that we can unpack. But when I think about how will we know we have a thriving workforce, it's when any member of our team can affirm all of those things. So to share with you today some observations and some evidence and feedback that has come to us from various sources, I'm gonna I'm gonna put these in three categories. Thinking about our thriving workforce in the ways that they collaborate. Thinking about our thriving workforce in the way that they see clarity in their work. And thinking about our thriving workforce in the way that they have voice in what's happening all around them. Several sources are considered here. You're not going to see any data charts or tables. But what's informing our actions around these areas and around building a thriving workforce include listening circles, meet and confer sessions with our GBEA partners, Burns Van Fleet Transition Report, Principal Advisory Council. And and District Office Building Staff Interviews with new to the district teachers in the field. As I said at the beginning, this is not a comprehensive report on our thriving workforce. Clearly, we would need qualitative and quantitative data. And more voices at the table, particularly those of our leaders in human resources around recruitment, retention. Staff development figures. So again, my hope is this this is restarting some conversations that we can go into much more detail with over time with some of those things in mind. So what we've heard from those various sources. This is my roll up. When I look at all of those sources that have informed places I've been circles that I've been in and called to by teachers and teacher teams, engagement with principals and leaders. A deep study of the transition report. Here are some takeaways and some observations around each of these. So as it relates to collaboration. This to me is about the purpose of our teams, our committees. And how we prioritize the value of collaboration among teachers. What's coming through the evidence is that teams feel like they're called together to often hear of a decision that has been made. Rather than shape and influence the decision that ultimately gets made. Important collaboration among teachers is challenging due to numerous other demands on their time when they're not teaching. There's a general understanding and acceptance of the importance of collaboration. As we start to look at available minutes in the day to actually commit to it. We have some serious challenges and barriers in place for true collaboration to take place. As it relates to clarity. Efforts feel fractured with many directives and expectations coming from various departments and leaders within the organization. The connections among these are not clear. Any organization with many layers struggles to engage and communicate within and outside of the system in ways that are clear to all and actionable by all. And as it relates to staff voice. There's a general sense that things are done to people rather than with people. Many expectations are understood through the lens of compliance only. And not a shared understanding of the why behind these expectations. So those are my words. Those are words that I'm sharing with you. After a fair amount of engagement with folks who are eager and anxious to be a part of the most important work we do, which is academic excellence for our students. And are naming the barriers that are currently in place to doing that. So I'd like to share with you a few responses that are in place and in motion related to each of these. And just like before, I'll pause at the end for questions that you have. Here we'll start with collaboration. In August of twenty twenty-three, the education team. Which is a large cross-functional team made up of directors, executive directors and associate directors. Really was reconstituted to take a focused look at working together. And included in that work was to partner with a teacher in the field. And so each member of the education team. Twenty-four individuals has a go-to partner in the field. This is a teacher at some level of the organization and we were really careful to make sure that we reached out across buildings, levels, subject areas, so on. And it's that partnership that allows us to have a sounding board through some of the work that we organize as a district education team. Most notably, we've been seeking feedback and input and the lived experiences of our teachers as it relates to observation and feedback practices within their school, not necessarily the formal ones, but the informal ones. What is it you'd be interested in learning about to grow your practice and who is giving you feedback on that? And of course, we're learning a wide range of things. And it's the collection of all of what we've learned in those one-on-ones that's contributing to some of the observations I shared on the previous slide. Our school leaders, principals, associate principals and administrative interns are all involved in shared learning. We don't have something special and unique for principals, something different for APs, something different for administrative interns. We bring them all together for shared learning. Major focus of that work this year has been on building their skills as coaches rather than managers. And recognizing opportunities they have to show up more coach-like to their staff and to in teachers than directive and managerial. That work continues each month. We've created practice opportunities for that. And our principals and associate principals and admin interns. Are responding that that is a powerful part of their professional learning and it is causing them to shift and rethink a lot of aspects of their practice. That's an anecdotal response, but we do survey our participants at the end of each session and there appears to be higher interest in this as the chunk of learning that they engage in. This seems simple, but there's some dividends here separating learning from information updates to keep the focus where it needs to be. Sometimes the focus needs to be on learning. And when we say that, let's get together and engage in learning. Sometimes there's stuff we just need to share and tell. Then let's just get together and do that. A history, a past practice had been, let's just put as much stuff together as we can because this is two and a half hours of precious time. Let's just lump it all together. I don't think people take away what's intended when you do that. And so we're just really conscious within district leadership to be clear on separating those two things as much as possible. And then our planning for professional learning, and you'll see a little bit about this tonight as we talk about our opportunity with letters to read more and more teachers, particularly it's important that we approach that in a way that honors pacing, priorities, time for application and reflection. I know there's interest and opportunity to perhaps accelerate learning like letters because we think it's the impact is going to get to students faster if we just get through the learning quicker. But high quality professional learning has to include opportunities for reflection reflection and practice in your classroom. And so when we talk about an extension and taking advantage of the state's two-year window for that. That's intentional and important so that our teachers can have time to take a chunk of learning, bring it into their classroom and talk to each other about it before we introduce a new chunk of learning. That's an example of how we're approaching professional learning for next year. Clarity. Later this spring, when you see the proposed organizational structure for the district office and and centralized leadership. You'll see a structure that seeks to clarify by flattening that organizational structure. Particularly in the areas of teaching and learning, student services and school leadership where you will see the you'll no longer see the position of executive director in that as that layer within the organization. And what you'll see instead will be really a core group of directors and the directors of those departments. Increasingly and through the ed team are in conversations about their collective work and not their individual work. So that again, clarity to the field allows us to speak with one voice when we engage with staff and with the community. Clarity also comes through when we talk about what does equitable instruction look like regardless of what building you're in, regardless of what grade level, what subject area. And so working to establish, beginning with some of our leaders and then some of our teachers this summer collaboratively, a shared vision for equitable instruction so that again, we can speak with one clear and common voice about instruction. And then staff voice. So many of these things overlap. Obviously, I've probably used the word staff voice when I talked about the other two. It's really just the inner relationship of all of these things in a in a trusting environment. Ongoing engagement with our GBA partners through meet and confer and weekly meetings. They are also inviting me and creating some listening circles where teachers of same subject, same grade level, same level. Fairly varied configurations. I'm having some great opportunities to spend some time with them and that's yielding a lot of of the data that I'm sharing with you. These interviews that we're doing with new to district staff are forging stronger connections between DOB staff, all staff across all departments, not just the three that I mentioned before with with interviews with teachers who are new to the district out in their buildings. And so we're going to the places where they do their work. We're asking questions and we're learning about a lot of hope, a lot of positivity, a lot of challenges. And as we identify trends in what we're learning, it's going to help us inform and even better onboarding and an induction phase for for folks. Particularly folks that come to us after the school year starts. That's kind of a quick aha for some of these. We're hearing certain things from folks that start after the school year that our eyes are open to. School improvement planning and monitoring at the site level. There was a reference in the transition report and in others about site-based leadership. That includes site-based capacity building, giving folks within the building the tools to look at their own data. Understand their own students, recognize the opportunity for growth that's there. And then fully own the process, start to finish about what improvement will look like in their buildings. Our principal advisory team is rebooted, minor standing as it's existed in the past. We're back in business with that with a advisory team that has some rotating membership, but also inclusive membership. Every principal at some point in the year is part of the advisory team. And when we come to you with things like an inclement weather plan, a calendar. Position descriptions, all of those have been part of conversations with the principal advisory teams. Among other teams and groups. And then just this is just a little bit of language, but this is becoming more and more important to me. If we're going to do work together. Let's call them work teams. And the idea, the difference between a committee and a work team might inform how we actually approach that work. So when we get folks together to work on the calendar, we get folks together to work on the structure of the school day. Let's identify it as work we're going to do together and not have it be, again, going back to some of those early observations, people feeling like they're called together to hear about something that's already been completed. Let's recognize that there's work to do together. It might be harder than sitting in a room and being told something that's already been decided. But we have a lot of staff that are interested in doing that work. We have a lot of staff that are interested in that. And there's some early indications that that we should do more and more of that. I have no reflections here because I already shared them with you. So this is your opportunity for questions and
I just want to say thank you for being honest and open about concerns that teachers have expressed because some of those concerns are expressed to us. And I'm happy to hear that you're recognizing them and that you'll say them out loud. Anybody else? Good.
Right to appreciate the the candor. I'm looking for from you. How often are you going to ask the question? And how are you going to determine if you're being successful? This this looks like a good plan. Culture is very difficult to change, especially if there's trust issues. I appreciate the 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 quote at the beginning that kind of is your litmus test for having achieved that. Are you going to survey? How are you going to determine and at what interval are we going to ask the question? Are you a valued member of a winning team doing meaningful work?
Yeah, here's the interesting thing about that and about surveys in particular. Another another thing I've become aware of is that we have low participation rates in surveys because people don't believe what you're going to do with them or whether you're going to do anything with them. And so there's a breakthrough we need to make. There's a there's a trust breakthrough we need to make so that as we ask questions like that, we are actually hearing from the an abundance of our staff around that. And so we got to ask the right question. We've got to ask it in an environment of trust and in some trusting ways so that more and more we can rely on those. And probably we need to ask fewer times than an onslaught of survey after survey after survey. So I'm mindful of that and I'm and I appreciate the challenge of how are we going to know we're actually making progress toward that, just like we are with academic academic outcomes?
I you you hit the nail on the head, right? That's my concern, right? Survey, it doesn't build trust. But it's an important part of this. I appreciate this part of the plan. I don't want it to be lost for the district to come back and find a way to report on progress because I think our constituents want to hear that message. I'm very interested. I'm very interested in changing the culture in the district as well for the, for the better. So just, you know, I know that it wasn't part of your presentation tonight, but I'm very interested in understanding how we're going to evaluate progress, right?
Thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad to see that meet and confer. This came off of a motion that I made in 2012 to enshrine it as an ongoing practice. It's still happening and regularly. Hopefully not just with GBEA, but other units too. Okay. So I have two things here and it's, I just want to make it clear before I say it, that it's very much a both and situation. I am very, very happy to hear this commitment. And I, I believe that you mean every word that you said. And I believe superintendent buyer means everything that's in this report too. Okay? And also, I have heard it all before from other people so many times in, in history. So it's a both and, right? I, I believe that it is sincere and we mean it this time. I think historically, when I've heard things like this, it was meant sincerely some of the time, but didn't happen really any of, of the time. I mean, we never got where, never got where you're wanting to go. There were some little, some little improvements. So what? I guess what I'm wondering is, and I have a couple of, couple of specific questions in here. I see, I thought for many years we needed to flatten the organizational structure. There were sometimes, it could be up to five people between the principal and the superintendent. I think at least four. Removing a layer is, is a little flatter, but there's still a lot of people between a principal and the superintendent. And even though the superintendent in your door, I'm sure is very sincerely open to principals, there's also an acknowledgement of a, of a chain of command, right? So there's still going to be a few steps in between there. So, but I like a, you know, a step towards flattening is good. And I guess the other thing is, for those who have been in the district a long time, which would include people who have heard that, oh, committees, work teams, it's going to be different. We're start, we're going to start listening more. We're not going to have, we're not going to tell you you're going to approve this because we've already decided it. Are, are we, how are we going to get to the point where, you know, we have, we have that legitimate debate, professional difference of opinion may happen. And then ultimately, and I know this is scary for, this is something that central office folks don't necessarily always like, but you might have a situation where the board has to make a judgment call where perhaps those in the field like one thing and the administration liked one that was also valid but cost less, and maybe the board is going to go a different way. I think most of the time there'd be consensus, right? But what, you know, what I know is that it's going to be very hard to, maybe very hard to convince a lot of people about, you know, you being sincere, me, me saying I, I believe these folks are sincere. How are we really going to get there? And does that in fact mean that there might, we might occasionally see a minority report on a curriculum recommendation? Or, or we might see, we might see a double option at the board table saying, you know, administrations knows that there's money concerns, but the teachers pick the more expensive one. And it's a judgment call that's reached the board level, so.
Just want to point something out quick and then turn it over to David. He's actually brought up minority reports. It's something that he would like to pursue moving forward. And seeing two opposing options for the Board of Education, you will actually see that tonight with IPP. We took care of two of them. David, did you add anything?
Oh, I, okay, that's, so one, one step to build the idea that there might be two opinions coming to the board table for the board to make a judgment call would be to bring a proposal to the table where there's two opinions and we need to make a judgment call. So that's really good. And not something we've, not something we've seen of this nature. We've been given options before, but this is a little different. So it's good to see on curriculum. I guess another thing is, I think we were just pre-COVID, getting to maybe the point where that school perception study was getting somewhere because there were, there were trends. There were things that were learned out of it, but then it stopped. So whether it's that or, or something else, I think the, I think you can't really replace the comprehensive report and a comprehensive report that asks tough questions, right? There is, you know, fear of, fear of retaliation for disagreement is mentioned a lot by, by too many people. And I don't, sometimes it's because something happened and sometimes it's because something happened to someone else that you heard about it and happened years ago. And sometimes it's because you heard about it from someone who heard about it who happened to something, right? So the cultural shift is, is important though. So I guess how do we, to me, that's one of the most important pieces to, to clear, right? But we've had meet, we've had meet and confer for a long time and we've had good relationships with the association for a long time. And yet we still hear fear of retaliation and a better toe the party line. And so how do we get rid of that?
I'm still thinking. Why don't you hop in and I'll?
Okay, I, I would just, our actions have to speak for it. I think the more we're able to demonstrate that we're sincere about the things that you just saw, hopefully that will bring the trust that we need.
Yeah, and I think my comments just back that up a little bit to say, in all of our processes where we're convening as work teams, whether it's around creating a calendar, creating what a school day looks like, selecting high-quality instructional materials, we need to, we need to apply a filter to the process to make sure that vigorous professional debate is built into the process so that the only time we debate it doesn't happen when we come before the board or even you debate it with each other if it's a split decision, but that it's actually, it's actually gone through a process where divergent opinions and perspectives and honoring and respecting data and the intersection of data with practice are all discussed and, and approached early in a process. And there's not a single process that we engage in that isn't worth revisiting to make sure that it includes, that is an expectation. And, you know, it includes who you bring to the table to do the work. It includes, in some case, I'm going to say in all cases, this is a bias, but I think suspending hierarchy around the table when we're in those work teams is really, really important as well. I do have an open door to principals because I believe the relationship that I'm building with principals in the field keeps that door open to them. They're not coming to me to get around something. They're coming to me as a trusted partner increasingly. And that's, that's how I can prove just through my own actions that I'm working to that. But I, I do believe that we need to build into our processes or at least examine our processes to make sure that we leave a space for vigorous professional debate.
So this is probably going to lead into the next thing we're talking about. But what I want to know is like, before you, you take, you take like the math and you take it to piloting. Who had input on choosing the resources? Were, were the teachers, you know, like the department heads and everything? Were those teachers involved in that?
Yeah, those, yeah, those, those details will be in that, in that topic. Yep, yep. Okay, I will scoot down and bring some of my colleagues to the table.
So next we have the resource adoptions and David and some members from the teaching and learning department will be joining.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Always very thankful to come here as a director of curriculum, but also as a community member and a parent of GBAPS students. I want to give a special thank you to Cindy Cantwell, who has worked very passionately for the past three to four years on, working on finding a high-quality math resource for our high schools, one that is going to align with the elementary resource as well as the middle school resource. And as David pointed out, we're seeing success in our middle schools, success that we have not seen previously with our resources. And so tonight, it's really important to me to be able to showcase some of the successes that we've had with the open up resource. And to hopefully be able to extend that same line of thinking around inquiry that we're seeing success with in our elementary and our middle schools. I think that one of the other things that David pointed out was the engagement piece that we're seeing and hearing from principals, from teachers, from students in the middle school level. And when we surveyed students, when we asked them after using the open up resources, what kinds of things are you doing in math? Forty-five percent of them said that nearly every day, having discussions with their classmates about math. They're, they're no longer taking notes, working on homework assignments, but instead they're having discussions about math. And that's what math is about, being able to do those types of thinking, to be flexible with our thinking and to be able to work and collaborate with others. And so we're starting to see that in our high school math classes. I've enjoyed collaborating with principals and teachers throughout this process. In all transparency, Cindy does most of the collaboration with teachers. She's been out in classrooms, teaching in some of the classrooms, co-teaching, and collaborating with the department chairs and teachers who are using this resource in the trial for, all of them here today have been using it since last year, last January. So they've been using it for about a full year now. I, I don't have anything else to say at this point. I'm sure you'll have some questions for me, but I want to be able to have the teachers share their experiences because in addition to student voice, which we've included in the process throughout the way, from step one, from asking them, what resources do you think might help you learn best? What types of things are you doing in math? We've also included that voice through teachers, same, same area. Every teacher had the opportunity, they had a month to be able to review all of the resources that we presented. They were able to provide feedback on the resources and then volunteer their time to be able to trial the resource in a more in-depth way.
I think this is a good time for that question then. Let me find it. So you gave them choices to look at and then they could, you know, view them at their leisure. Who chose the ones they could look at?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So the, actually the first step in the process was we surveyed teachers to ask them what they would like to see for in a high-quality resource. So we asked teachers to rank different research, different aspects of resources to ensure that when we pulled together a district team, that we were able to include their voice in that initial process. Now Cindy can validate this, but when we look at ed reports, which is a trusted resource for us to be able to narrow down the scope of math resources, when we look at that resource, there are maybe twenty to, you know, twenty different math resources. I don't know a teacher who has time to be able to review twenty resources. So what we do is we use rubrics that are in place in addition to ed reports. We surveyed teachers to ask what things are you looking for? What things do you think will help students to be able to learn well in your classroom? And based on those responses, which we had a, let's see. Cindy, you might have to help me. I think we had a sixty or seventy percent response from all teachers that we asked at the initial to rate those different resources, different components. And so then what we did was we organized a district team that included gifted and talented teachers by, I'm sorry, gifted and talented curriculum coordinators who are teacher-level positions. Bilingual department, special education department, people services, looking for behavior and engagement work. Also, obviously people from the teaching and learning department. And so then that team came together, yeah, go ahead.
Are any of those people in the classroom teaching?
Nope, they are not in the classroom full-time. So that we use the teacher survey to narrow down the twenty to about three resources. At that point, then we present the three most high-quality resources that we found and we present those to, to teachers. And then we give them, I think in this case in high school, we tried to narrow it down to two or three. I think in high school we had three, I'm sorry, two. And then we provide all teachers, all math teachers across the district. We, in this case, we had a month of access for teachers to be able to review all components of the resource. And then they can, they could attend a vendor meeting where they were provided more information and then ultimately provide feedback on those resources.
Angie, can you introduce your team?
Actually, I'm going to have them introduce some, I was going to have them introduce themselves and share, obviously their name, but also their school and the course that they're teaching. And then give a little, a little bit of their experience. So maybe we could do that and then come back to questions. Okay, Tanya, do you want to start us off?
Just myself and give my little. Hi, good evening. I'm Tanya Jones. I've been at Red Smith Middle School for eleven years teaching math. I currently teach three preps. I have the accelerated seven class. I have eighth graders in mid-school math. And then I also have algebra one for eighth graders using the open up. It's, I have a very interesting perspective being that I teach across accelerated seven, eighth grade and algebra, and I'm in three different resources currently. So accelerated, I know accelerated seven is in a more traditional book that I've done my best to kind of modify a little to be not as traditional. And then this is our second year in mid-school math with the eighth graders, which we're really seeing students being engaged and I love working and seeing their thinking. And then the first year this year with algebra students and open up, what I'm, I'm enjoying even more, and my favorite part is that I'm no longer standing in the front of the room presenting. I am elbow, elbow, elbow to elbow with students, face to face, either in small group, one-on-one, having those discussions and more of a facilitator. Yes.
So when the children are taking algebra, oh, sorry, they're advanced, right? So they come with all the good arithmetic and all the basic skills that, that they need. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm Carrie Mako. I teach geometry out of the open up series at Prepple High School. I have been teaching for thirty years now. So this is a brand-new way for me to teach. And I have to say, I have really been enjoying it. I will go on the record saying I was skeptical at first. I have really come a hundred and eighty degrees from where I started with the, with the system. And I think a lot of it has to do with the students, you, you can see them thinking. You can see them, they are engaged, they are sharing their information. If I ask a student, hey, can you come up and show me in? If I ask a student, hey, can you come up and show me in, because it's geometry, it's a lot of different that they have, can you show your work or explain to the class what you were thinking when you did this? The students are open to that. They're like, yeah, they'll take the marker and they'll draw on the board with what they need. A lot of the students are not afraid to say, well, what if I did it this way? Is that okay? Well, I don't know, let's try. And they go up and they'll explain and they'll try. I see students that, on their assessments that they're taking, will ask for different tools that we've been using along the way that they haven't asked for in the past. Hey, can I try it with this instead? Like, I don't remember exactly what the theorem said, but they're thinking in their head, I remember doing this in the activity. Can I try and recreate that? And I didn't have that in the past. So I do think that the students are asking more questions and are more willing to be engaged.
I'm Trishen Imicek. I'm also at Preble High School, twenty-seven years. I teach math extension geometry. I'm doing the Open Up Algebra Two for Precalc, and I also teach AP Precalculus. I would say that I would agree with Carrie. I had some apprehensions in the beginning of exactly how this was going to manage itself in my classroom, especially because I didn't know if the students had the skills coming in that they would need to be successful. But I'm seeing that the students really have surpassed my expectations on numerous occasions. There are several instances where I was wondering if students would get to the point of learning that I needed them to. And not only did they get to the point of what I needed them to conceptually understand, but they were able to explain it to other students in the classroom and help them make sense of it as well. I would say that one of the strengths of the resource is the connections to the context. I hear this year, my students in Precalculus mentioning context from last year, mentioning Ferris wheels when we're talking about trigonometric functions. Do you remember this from last year on the Ferris wheel? Those are not things that I heard in the past. They're taking the contextual understanding and they're applying it to future mathematics. I also see that the students in my room are engaged for fifty minutes in learning. I have little to no control of what happens when they walk out of my door. But seeing them engaged and retaining things from day to day is, has been growth. And finally, I see kids asking questions and thinking ahead and thinking outside of the box in ways they haven't before. Today, we were working on some trigonometry and I had students ask like, hey, I wrote this equation. Do you think this works all the time? I don't know. Why don't you prove to me if it does or it doesn't? Those are not things I would have heard from kids in the past. They're asking if the situations that we're working on in class not only work in the situation that we're particularly working on, but they want to know, and they're asking if it works in all situations for all different types of functions. Those are just not conversations that I've ever had students not only ask of me, but ask of each other and be interested in.
Hi, my name's Don Shedesky. I teach at Preble. I'm teaching the geometry with Carrie Mako. We actually do a lot of planning together, trying to figure out how we're going to do this lesson. I've been teaching for thirty-two years and I was scared crazy of going and teaching this new style. I mean, I think I was a great teacher before. I think I really connected with my kids. I did more of a traditional, but I think I really connected with them. But I never seen kids think as much as I have this last year. I mean, I can just see the little hamster cruising up in their head and their mind just thinking like, okay, what's going on here? And through questioning, I'm able to get them to the finish line. And they're discussing it with each other. It's neat to see one problem, this is the way I had done it in the past. I would just say, hey, this is the theorem, this is how you do the problems. And this new resource allows me to have the kids come up with the ways. And the kid will have an answer and I'll say, how'd you get that? And they're like, I did this, this, this. I'm like, oh, my God, I've been doing this for thirty-two years and I never even thought of that approach. So it's really powerful in that it allows the kids to get into the task at their own level, where they're at. And then through each other, through the collaboration, through the teacher questioning, they're able to get to the finish line. And so, like I said, it was very, it's still new and I think I have to still work at it. And I think the kids are still learning on it. I mean, that productive struggle is hard for kids. They don't, they, some kids just want to be told the answer. Like, tell me how to do it, show me how to do it, I'll do it, right? But they don't retain it then, and they're not thinking about it. And they're not doing the what-ifs and the wonders and how does this apply? When I get to a new concept, can they take that old concept and apply it to that new? They don't do that if you just tell them how to do it. And so this resource allows the students to kind of discover that on their own.
No, I think that the teachers have really said it way better than I ever could. Thank you all for being here.
Does the board have any questions? Nancy?
It's not exactly a question, but I do, I have concerns from some teachers who have reached out to me. And I have the data here and things. And I will just touch base with Angie and David.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Lynn?
I know that you've been doing this just for a little over a year. Do you have assessment data yet to show that students are making better progress?
Yeah, so David had showed you earlier the Mastery Connect data that was up there. And so we have that on, we were able to break that data apart. And we're able to select classrooms that are using the Open Up resource and then classrooms that are not using the Open Up resource. And overall, the classrooms that are using Open Up resources are having about a three to five percent higher student achievement than classrooms that are not. It, I will, I will say though, that, I'm sorry, that research indicates that in order for us to be able to really start to see student achievement, we need to be able to use a resource for three to five years to be able to start to see the larger increase in student achievement.
And so when you decided which teachers and which classes this would be used for, I don't quite know how to ask this question because I'm a mathematical idiot. I don't speak math and I don't even, oh, I mean, I can't even relate to what you're talking about. It gives me goosebumps. But are there other classes for people like me in high school that, you know, really struggle with math? And would they be using this resource at this time also? Or was this only for like students who are already kind of into math?
No, this will be a universal resource. And so the first time that we did the trial last year, we asked teachers who would be willing to volunteer to utilize the resource. This time, the second time that we went into the trial, we organized a more comprehensive team. So we included, as Tanya said, the algebra from middle school. And then we also have a large group of Algebra One teachers who are teaching it across the district. And so, and we also had representatives from each school. So we built the trial team out a little bit more. But it would be for, yes, algebra, because we need to have our students in algebra across the board, whether they're in eighth grade or ninth grade, they need to use the same resource because that is a high school credit. And so we want to make sure that they're having the high school algebra. So Algebra One would typically freshman, all students would use the resource. Sophomores in geometry and then Algebra Two as well, and then Algebra Two for Precalc.
Did, did all students seem to do better with this? Or are there people like me who would be hopeless?
No, I can't say all students did better, right? So I'm talking about averages when we're looking at the data. I did have some conversations with parents from Algebra Two for Precalc. So those would be students who would probably have taken algebra as eighth graders and then moved, moved at a higher pace or a higher level for math classes. And there were some students who struggled in that class. I really believe that that is a contributing factor of that is because those students did not have elementary bridges. And so they were not already starting to think flexibly and to, as all the teachers described, show their thinking, talk about the context. They didn't have that experience. And then they didn't have a middle school now. And so for those students, this is kind of their first time having these math discussions and asking their own questions and trying to use the skills that they have. I can't remember who said it, but great way to say it. These are really like low-floor, high-ceiling tasks so that students can enter at whatever level they need to enter at. And they can use the skills they have. And then the teacher is the guide, the person who is taking that level here and helping them see other strategies and moving them higher into their, into higher levels of thinking about math.
Can I add to that? In our geometry, we have freshmen through seniors in our geometry. So we have students in our geometry classes that have failed geometry once, maybe twice already. And our, they're, they need to pass geometry, so they're still in there. And I see some of those juniors that I have more engaged and more successful than they had in the past. And they are finding success at it.
I have a lot of questions and they're all unfair because you're not prepared necessarily to answer them. And this is directed at the board. You know, as we look at spending district money and for these large expenditures, we have a set of evaluation criteria to help us make those decisions. And it dawned on me that when we look at curriculum adoption, the board presentation and what we expect to see and hear. And so I have questions about, is there a minority opinion from the committee? And how did we get there? And there's a lot of information I'd like it. I'd like to see if the board is interested in looking at the policy associated with curriculum development and see if there is a set of what this presentation should look like. Because even tonight, there's differences between each curriculum that we're going to look at and the amount of detail in the presentation. And I think that puts you at a disadvantage because I can just hit you with questions out of left field that you're not prepared to answer. But I feel like there are, there is information about the nature of the committee, if there is a minority opinion on, and if there are struggles with the curriculum that would inform my decision that I just don't have in front of me. So I appreciate the, the presentation. I'm not challenging this particular curriculum. But as a point of consistency for making decisions and adoption, in reading it again tonight, we're very light on instructions to what this kind of presentation should have to help us make a decision.
And if I could just add, we do have that information that you're looking for. So we have, we have rubrics, we have criterion that we use. We have all of the surveys and the data points as far as how the resource was rated. Certainly, if you had a directive of, we would like to have this information included, we would be able to provide that.
It allows us to do a pre-read, right? So here's, here's how the information should be presented. And we get there and have fewer questions and we get to a consensus more quickly, yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any more questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay. David, are you staying with us for the elementary social studies resource adoption?
I think I'm here for all of them. Happy to be here for all of them.
Is anyone else joining you?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, it's me again. Thank you for, again, having us here tonight. We also are presenting a supplemental resource for social studies. This is different in nature than the last one in that it is a supplemental resource, meaning that there is, teachers will be able to select from a variety of resources to be able to use for social studies. Using the same curriculum process that we use for other resources, we engaged teachers to be able to find out, first of all, what do you need for social studies? And what kind of time do you have? So a big factor for the social studies resource and why we are shifting to a supplemental for this is because of the lack of time that teachers have reported to us in which they have time to be able to teach social studies and science. So they were looking for a little bit more of a flexible resource that they could use within smaller chunks of time throughout the week, but still be able to have high expectations for students and still be able to meet the state standards. And so one of the first steps was really being able to find a resource that would allow us some customization. And so the resource that we're bringing tonight, a resource by Teacher Creative Materials, is customized for Green Bay. So we actually presented them with the things that we would like to be able to teach in our classrooms, based on the state standards, based on the work that teachers' teams did with our curriculum coordinator, who has, who is not feeling well and wasn't able to be with us tonight. So she apologizes, Ashley Kumro. But they were able to customize that package for us. And so again, I will leave it to the teachers to explain a little bit as to why they appreciate this resource and would like to begin to use it. So same thing, if you want to share who you are and what school you're at and what grade that you're teaching, please.
I teach second grade with Sarah at MacArthur.
Yep, I teach fourth grade and I've taught for Green Bay Public for twenty-four years. Sarah Schiller.
I'm Beth Singler.
And we're super, we were excited to be a part of this committee workforce now, right? And.
Work team.
Work team, thank you. Work team. Because social studies is making a huge shift into inquiry-based learning. So having students ask questions and creating a safe place in our classroom where students can ask those questions. And this kit has primary sources, including photographs and maps that connect to our standards that allow teachers to ask these questions by using a strategy called Look, Think, Question.
I think the materials are really engaging. I didn't get to try them with my second graders, but we were able to work with someone who created the kit for us. And I thought his professional development for us was very engaging. Even on like a late Friday afternoon, when we got out of our building level professional development, lots of hands-on tasks. We think this is really important for the kids and making it inquiry-based in the way that we think about science as being inquiry is also making it more relevant to the kids. And we do think that this particular kit will tie in with the work that we've done with Dr. Holly for Social and Emotional Learning.
Yep, to use all those protocols that we've been learning about. Time is an issue in elementary schools. And so we were kind of asked to think about this as having three thirty-minute lessons a week and then having three units, one for each trimester, that hits our standards. And the TCM, they, they created a kit that, that does that. They have the questions for us to ask. They have extension projects. If it was a standard that your class was really interested in, you could take it farther, which is really important to keep our students engaged and learning and thinking. Another really neat part of this is an electronic version is available for teachers to display. So teachers that have smart boards can use that. And student, teachers without smart boards can still project it. And it's just, you know, a little tiny book versus a big screen. That makes a big difference for little eyes.
I also appreciate the civics readers that they include. One of them is called Everyone Pays Taxes.
So unlike the rest of the curriculum resource cycle that we use, we did not have a trial with this resource because it is a supplemental resource. And so we did not have that piece of it. We did have teachers come in to be able to meet with the TCM representative. And so they had a good idea of what the resource was. And actually, after that, the initial one, there were some concerns that came up regarding some of the texts that were selected. And so the company quickly changed those out and gave us resources that reflected more of what we were looking for.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Lynn.
Can you just give us an example of what that?
Can you just give us an example of what that, what you just said? Like, what text would you want changed and why?
Um, so there was a text in the, one of the kits, I can't remember what grade it was, but there was, um, some representation of First Nations people that we did not, um, we would have liked to see better, better representation. And so we asked for a resource that would still address those standards, but that had a more positive reflection of First Nations people.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right. Next is multilingual learner resource adoption.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Julie Seifelt. I am the Director of the Multilingual Learner Programs. And like Angie, I'm coming not only as an employee. I live in the Southwest quadrant and I am a very proud graduate of Green Bay West High School. Go Wildcats! So with me tonight, I have Toni Lucia. She's the Associate Director of Multilingual Learners. So we're coming to you tonight, um, to ask for an allocation of funds to purchase resources for our multilingual learner students. Um, two resources coming for two different groups of students. So the first resource is for our high school, uh, multilingual students who are in their first or second year in the country. Um, it's also for middle school and high school students who are coming to our schools with, uh, limited or interrupted formal education. And those students would have two years in this program. Um, all of these students, if you have limited schooling or if it's your, just your first year, it's a two-hour block that they have for this course and these materials. Um, we are requesting materials from Harcourt Mifflin, um, Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. And it's two materials. The first one is called Language Launch, and it is an English language development, resource for secondary students. It is not computer-based at all. It is more teacher-led, a lot of interaction with the students. The second resource is called The Code, and that one is, uh, computer-based and it very much adapts to the students. And that one is on the fundamental literacy instruction. Um, so, uh, the second resource is for elementary students and it is called Lexia English Language Development. And it is for, um, our elementary ESL students who are not on track towards English proficiency as determined by DPA. So what happens is when an English learner or multilingual learner comes into the state of Wisconsin, Wisconsin puts them on a track and gives them so many years to reach English proficiency. And so for example, if you first take the Access for ELLs, which is our English proficiency assessment in kindergarten, and you score a level one, the state gives you six years to reach English proficiency. So that means when you are in sixth grade and you take the assessment, you are expected to exit. So because of that, the state tells you how many scale score points you need to earn each year. So you are on track. And if you don't reach those scale scored points, you're considered off-track. So we are requesting Alexia English Language Development for those students who are off-track. It's about a 10 to 15-minute extra dose of English language development uh, that the ESL teacher does in addition to their already instruction that they're providing in English to the students. So it's a, it's another boost, what we say. Um, just like Angie talked about involving teachers, um, involving students, we went through the same process. I have to tell you, there is not a lot out there for secondary students who are new to the country in terms of English language development and literacy instruction. I keep saying, when I retire, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna write programs because there is not a lot out there. Um, we looked at about six resources. Um, they just, two of them met the criteria we were looking for. So we brought those to the teachers. We brought the two resources to 91 students who are enrolled in the current class this year. Overwhelmingly, it was Language Launch and The Code, which was recommended. Um, we're very fortunate. We have been, um, field testing. Uh, we've got some teachers who are in a trial right now. We've got four teachers. And normally we only have about eight teachers across the district who teach this course. So half of those are doing the trial right now. They've been in it for six weeks. We have met numerous times with the company for continued professional development. That's why trial. We're, we're changing it. We're making it better. Teachers have a lot of input on how this is gonna roll out in their classroom. And, um, I have to say, things are going very well. Um, in terms of Lexia English Language Development, uh, Lexia was very good to us. We got to pilot it for free last year, but it didn't start until late in the spring. And we didn't really have enough time to come to you and ask to purchase this resource. So Lexia allowed us for this whole year, for like 10 months, to use that resource to continue to dig into it. Um, and so they offered us 250 students this year. Um, so those are the resources. We are asking allocation of funds, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or Toni can as well.
Just briefly, what was the basic impetus that set you on this path to say, we need to have these things?
So our last resource for the secondary English Language Development, English Language Arts was in 2018. So that cycle was up. So we actually started two years ago, starting to look for resources because we knew we needed a new resource. We also wanted to make sure that we were meeting, um, Act 20. I know that Act 20 generally is for the, the younger kids, but we are talking about um, secondary students who are just beginning to read in English, so they need those same foundational skills. So these resources do meet that criteria.
Right.
One thing you said, uh, just kind of hit me there. They have language arts for two hours. So two class periods, I assume, so 90 minutes or 96 minutes or something around there. Are all of these curriculums set up for breaks within there? I mean, like the, because I'm a middle school teacher and I see my language arts students at 90 minutes getting restless with it and everything else and trying to pick it up, coming to school for possibly the first or second time on it. Um, these all take into the consideration with that. And the extra shot, you said, one of them, that's extra dose, uh, I did, sorry, is also built into that. Could you kind of elaborate a little bit on that?
So in the two-period block, so each school has, like, let's say around 50 minutes on average, so there's about 100 minutes. There is, when the bell rings in between, they, they still have that four-minute break. But then within the, um, instruction, so when the teacher is doing the language launch, there is a lot of small group work. It's there's like breaks within that. During the code, it's actually set up in rotation. So the students are getting up and moving. They have about 15 minutes with the teacher doing small group. They're 15 minutes on the computer, which they're working on the code. And then there's 15 minutes of independent time. So they're getting up, moving, talking, not just sitting in their desk for 100 minutes. And then, I'm sorry, what was the question on? Okay.
Anybody else? I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. All right. Next is, um, K8 English Language Arts Resource Adoption. I gotta say that it is really, really great to see so many teachers tonight. The kids, kids and teachers. I mean, it's just, yeah, can you, yeah.
Well, there's some elementary here, yeah. Well, good evening. Um, I'm Linda Teske, the Director of Literacy. And we're here tonight for the request for the allocation of funds and approval for expenditures related to the adoption of a K8 ELA curriculum and resources. We'll go around and introduce everyone right away and then we'll come back to me.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Gina Cornus Zacharias. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning Programs, representing the bilingual department.
I'm Susan House. I'm the Special Education Teacher at Tank Elementary.
I'm Michelle Stout. I am a sixth-grade ELA teacher at Edison Middle School.
I'm Jessica Grahec. I'm the Bilingual Literacy Coach at Dan's Elementary.
I'm Samantha Polio, and I'm the other literacy coach at Dan's Elementary.
I'm Karina Wallace, and I am the sixth-grade ELA teacher at Edison.
I'm Amy Shills, and I am the middle school literacy coach at Red Smith K8.
I am the literacy coach at Washington Middle School.
I'm Tammy Jones. I'm the Associate Director of Literacy Intervention.
I am Adeh Hoffman. I'm the Bilingual Literacy Coach at Sullivan Elementary.
And thank you to all of them for taking their time to come today to represent their schools and the implementation that's going on at their schools. Because they do have a wide range. When we're talking about the elementary, we're talking about a K5, and they've been in to represent K5. And then we have our six through eight. Thank you so much. Just some background. Since 2021, the Teaching and Learning Department has taken steps to address the 2020 changes in the Wisconsin State Standards in English Language Arts and the low student achievement on state assessments. So in 2021 to 2022, we took the K8 ELA curriculum resources and we screened them. And we looked, and we ranked, when we sent a survey out to staff, they ranked these as the most important items looking at when we screened them. Aligned to the New English Language Arts Wisconsin State Standards, included Spanish resources, they had a recent publication date, they had online and digital resources, and they met the requirement of the U.S.R. funding source that we are using. And that means they're green on ed reports. And if they're green on ed reports, it's a criteria for they're aligned to the standards. They're usually user-friendly for staff and students. They're well-designed to enhance teacher ability to differentiate. And they're culturally responsive. And then in 2023, we also had to thi- start thinking about meets the requirements of 2023 Wisconsin Act 20, which means they have phonological awareness, phonics, development of vocabulary, development of oral language, comprehension, fluency, and head
Through that screening process, um, only two resources met that specific criteria. And these two resources brought forward to Green Bay area public school teachers for their final review and recommendations. The resource that was recommended to bring forward by the teachers were, um, into reading, en arriba la lectura for the K5 ELA. Just to give you some context, 76% of elementary educators recommended, um, into reading, en arriba la lectura, as their recommended, uh, choice. 56% of the secondary or middle school educators, ELA educators, were recommending, um, into literature. All the resources for K5 educators will be for all of our teachers in English. In addition, for our bilingual teachers, they will also be receiving the resources in Spanish. So they could be teaching in the two languages. Professional learning will include the vendor training on the research, as well as professional learning for K5 educators in the science of reading to best equip our teachers, our K5 educators in utilizing the requested curriculum as well as giving them the professional learning that they will need, um, for interventions in curriculum resources based on the science of reading.
So that professional learning includes from the vendor, and the vendor does the one day upfront. But then they also include, I think, we ju- this is a Harcourt, a Houghton Mifflin Harcourt brace, um, resource again, just like Julie and Toni mentioned. And then within that, they have opportunities to have asynchronous, asynchronous and synchronous opportunities throughout the year, right on the platform. And I think David mentioned that too, these high-quality resources do have that. And within that, we also have opportunity to go on for the literacy coaches to meet with staff. And if they have questions specific to the vendor, they can have a coat, a vendor coach come on live right away. So that's included. So it's ongoing professional learning, along with letters for K5 in the science of reading is the request. K3 is required, K5, because it's a science of reading within our resources and our interventions, they would be supported in the science of reading professional learning that will, um, give them the knowledge and skills to think through that lens of the science of reading and how to meet the needs of all the students that are in their classroom. And when we talk about literacy intervention, and we'll come to that too with our group here, it's really around when we think about Act 20 and meeting the needs of all of our students that are below grade level, and they'll need a tier two. To have those resources to do that, David talked about that Core 5 adaptable resource. It alleviates kids from being pulled out, so they don't miss so much of their time that you were talking about, Nancy. But also it's in their independent time, so they, along with going to a small group that might, this one will flag the teachers, as this group will talk about how they utilize that. And then, um, how it tutors kids, so they can continue to move. And when they finally do not move, how it, it'll flag them, so they know that teachers can meet the needs of those students, because there are prepared lesson plans already there for teachers. So to alleviate that need to differentiate, but also have reports for parents and for teachers to meet those specific skills, this Core 5, Lexia Core 5, is a high-level, um, intervention that does that for our staff and for our parents and for our leaders within the schools. So they have those types of reporting out. Right now, I'm gonna turn it over to some of our anecdotal notes. You can hear how it's been going in the field at the K8 spectrum. So, um, why don't we start with the bilingual programming and at Dan's, because we'll have both the bilingual and the, um, Sam is English, but she has that ML background too and speaks Spanish. So why don't you just to start off, because you've had the pilot going at two grade levels there.
Right. So at Dan's, we've had the privilege of having two complete grade-level teams volunteer to participate in the trial. Um, our first-grade team is participating. That's comprised of five teachers, two of which are bilingual classroom teachers at HOE classroom. And then our fourth-grade team also piloted, and they are part of our SLA model. So there are bilingually programmed students and non-bilingually programmed students integrated in homerooms. And then our bilingually programmed students receive one hour a day of pull-out Spanish language arts instruction. And so we have had the opportunity to see this resource in action in a very, very diverse setting. Um, with our building probably right now, so it's at about 75% multilingual learners. And we have seen astronomical gains in the several weeks, six, eight weeks that we have been trialing the resource. We have seen some of the highest engagement in literacy instruction that we have seen in years. Kids getting their hands on their consumable MyBooks and whining that they can't look back at the previous stories from the modules we didn't get to trial yet. Begging their teacher, can I please, during my independent reading, look at the other stories? Um, students who, as they're sorting words with prefixes and suffixes, complain and whine when they have to put their words away and can't build sentences with prefixes and suffixes. Um, multilingual learners who are new to country, anywhere from a year ago to several months ago, actively engaging in their learning. There are incredibly captivating supports that support all learners. We know that all of our students come to us as, as academic language learners, even if English is their home language. So by providing a really captivating visual field, it almost has a graphic novel vibe to it. It brings their attention to core concepts such as ways to revise and edit a piece of writing or the HMH notice and note strategies for annotating a text when they're reading. Those notice and note strategies come out really, really early. You hear first graders Those notice and note strategies come out really, really early. You hear first graders getting, answering the question of, why did the, how do you know that this text is a procedural text? How do you know it's a how-to text? Well, it has numbers, Mrs. Doro. It has pictures that show how you do it step by step. It's such a language-rich environment. The Anchor Tarts also allow transfer between two languages. Gina mentioned that there will be Spanish resources for our dual-language teachers. In the past, one of the struggles we faced is that as bilingual teachers, we've always had to translate and trans-adapt our own resources and bank on our own pedagogical language being strong enough to do that work, or collaborating intra-district CLTs to try to do that work. The HMH resource isn't a direct translation. It is a trans-adaptation, which means that there are unique changes made to respect the fact that there are just some unique nuances in the language. That said, the core comprehension and decoding type strategies are the same across both languages. So we are seeing the fastest level of transfer we've ever seen. The methodology is very crystal clear. Writing is broken down into a process that's more digestible. You're not seeing 40 minutes of independent writing time. You're seeing a scaffolded writing process over a three-week module versus a six-week module. So you're seeing high levels of scaffolds and supports with high levels of language.
One of the areas that we've seen the highest level of engagement from both of our grade levels is the vocabulary. The kids really love the routines, and especially in fourth grade, we're seeing that transfer of vocabulary from their SLA class into their English lessons then, and knowing what those words are, even if they're not exactly sure what the word is in English. They know what the word is in Spanish. They know what's coming. And they're highly engaged. The fourth graders especially do never want the vocabulary lessons to end. They beg to do vocabulary, which is something I've, I was a middle school teacher, and I've never seen that happen before. As Jess had said, it's very clear. So the clarity of the teacher language and the way the manual is laid out provides for some consistency throughout the day, whether kids are transferring from schools or from classes or from their English to Spanish. There are some terms and the concepts that we're using. And there's that predictability for the students. They know what their day is going to look like, just some parts might change as to the content that they're learning, but they have a predictable schedule. And then the data that HMH provides, there's so many different reports at the assessment standard, student, class level that teachers are able to pull, and then be really reflective on their instruction and differentiating for students as needed.
And that differentiation piece is built right in. HMH provides for the teachers a weekly editable lesson plan that follows a prescribed or a suggested scope and sequence. And at the end of each of those module lesson plans are a variety of different suggestions for differentiation and different opportunities for post-poll group lesson instruction based on a variety of needs, including extra support in decoding, extra support with comprehension, extra support with multilingual learners and language acquisition. And we have seen monumental gains. Like I said, we had classes that had non-readers at the start of the pilot, and in three weeks, those students were reading. We had students in our bilingual program who were non-readers in English at the beginning of the trial and right now are reading at an end-of-kindergarten reading level, which means they've made one year's worth of progress in six to eight weeks. The structured literacy component, which has been the mainstay of our Spanish or our English language development time, has explicit decoding strategies. It really addresses the unique challenges of spelling in English and the rules. It introduces crystal clear patterns. And we've seen high levels of engagement even from new-to-country students who are engaging in all of that and able to then take an English text and decode what's on the page with a higher level of success. Within the first week, a number of our our Gen Ed or our English Language Instruction classrooms experienced students at a rate as high as 10 of 12 scoring perfect scores on their spelling tests. And we've seen an incredible increase in decoding and comprehension skills.
Thank you, Dan's. And to stay with elementary, I'm going to go to Susan House, the Special at Tank, and you can just add on any other observations you've had.
So from a special education perspective, it's a little different, right? So I primarily push in to my classrooms because that's the most or the best way, right? Especially when I have my older grades in fourth and fifth. And from a writing perspective, HMH provides a great opportunity. As they said, it's very consistent. And it's with each module that we go through. So we prime the text, we read the text. Then we talk about, you know, that genre, which is really important for our students, especially going into that forward exam, because those are all questions that they need to touch base on. They also have weekly assessments and module assessments. And the beauty of that is, again, it's following that forward exam module, which is really going to help our students year after year from the start of kindergarten and first grade and second grade, prepare for those types of exams early on, instead of getting to third grade and going, oh, no, how do I do this? Right? The other thing is, in the younger grades, the lower elementary, from a structured literacy standpoint, I had a student who came in and she couldn't blend a CVC word to save her little soul, right? And that's very devastating for a child in second grade. She now can tell you that the J sound is spelt with a J, a G, and a DGE. She understands the rule of CK and CK. And this is just in a short period of time. Today, she wrote the sentence correctly, not with capitalization or punctuation, but she spelled the words correctly. Green Bay is sunny. Today is warm. So we're seeing great gains and growths from all of our students. In the reading aspect, it really reinforces what I am doing in my interventions with my students, especially with Lexia Core Five, right? So my kids get Lexia Core Five with their class, and then they also get time with me and their reading intervention. So we're just reinforcing, which is helping them provide that much-needed growth that they need.
Thank you, Susan. And then we'll go to Edison and Red Smith, but we can start with Edison if you want, so you can put your mics on.
Okay. So Edison, just to be clear too, middle school is a little bit different. We do into literature, whereas they're referring to into reading. We're seeing a lot of the same things, but we have a slightly different schedule. And by the way, we do teach 100 minutes of reading straight, so we've been there. So some of the positives, we're seeing some engagement, some more engagement than we did before. We're seeing a lot of things being hit short amounts of time, but more frequently throughout. Instead of staying on an essay for six weeks, we're doing an essay in one. So the good thing about that is it is highly structured. The students seem to be enjoying that part of it. For example, the unit that we're in right now is surviving the unthinkable. So it's more engaging in terms of the topics, the selections that they're reading. We haven't done the Lexia part of it yet, but we are seeing in the HMH that we're seeing some productive struggle to start. It's very high rigor. It's at grade level, and we know our students are not at grade level, right? So we're seeing that struggle. However, since we've started this program in January, we've also seen a lot of growth. And that's a positive. And I think that even in our Mastery Connect, we're seeing that growth as well from the fall to the winter. So we have a lot more opportunities, I would say, right now to meet with students and have that conferring time, and we have a lot more data that we didn't have before. A lot of our data before was just our own notes about conferring and asking questions ourselves, whereas now we have actual numbers, and we can see whether or not standards were hit or missed, and we can actually determine exactly which questions and which standards were a struggle, and then go back and reteach those. So in that sense, it's a lot easier for us to assess student learning in that way, too.
To add on to what Michelle said, the structure is really engaging for the students, and they can expect. When we go through the unit, they know what to expect each week, and that takes out a lot of the stress for many of our learners. The level, the rigor is high, but it's really pushing our students. And I think that the texts are very engaging. We're seeing kids excited and connecting to those texts. And like she said, the data has been really helpful, because it helps us really get a good look at where it's at and not just in our hand notes, trying to figure that out. In vocabulary, it offers new vocabulary every week, and it's interesting to see the kids apply that and talk about it. And it's, of course, allowing for that collaboration. There's so many opportunities throughout the lessons where the kids are engaging with each other, teaching each other. The fact that they have computer and the workbook text to go through the text, they're writing, they're typing, they just have a lot of variety.
So at Red Smith, we've been piloting in our seventh grade, which is a 50-minute block daily. And we've been piling it or trialing it with two teachers. One of them is a teacher who's been teaching for 20-plus years, and the other is a brand-new educator. Both educators have been able to access the resource with zero issues. It's extremely user-friendly. It is very linear, which we appreciate. It's not all over the place. It follows in a very concrete way. We have had students talking about the standards. We talk about at the beginning of each lesson what standard we're hitting, and the students are able to use that language. We also have been using the HMH tutorials, which are these quick 10-minute lessons that they read it to the kids. The kids do these interactive practice activities on grammar, capitalization, commas, et cetera. And we've been doing those with our students as well and seeing a lot of really good success. Students going back into their writing to find capitalization errors and adding them back in. We did just complete Unit Four, which is nature, and our students wrote argumentative pieces about climate change. We had more engagement than we've seen all year. Students took a stand. They were able to pull data and evidence from grade-level texts that they may not have been able to access previously. Their writing is the best that we've seen all year. We were using the standards to talk to the students about their writing, and we had students pushing and asking, well, how do I score eighth grade? How do I get a four on this rubric? What do I need to do to take this from where it's at to where I can get that eighth level? And we've never had that before. Students that you would expect to ask and students that you didn't expect to ask. So that was really positive.
Thank you so much for all of you. And I know you're hitting and highlighting some of the places that we were low on our forward exam. So if you hear them look at you that way, that's one of the reasons. And then we're going to go into that layer of the intervention of Core Five and Power Up from Lexia.
So I get to speak to Core Five and Lexia, which is the intervention piece. We know that with a significant number of students performing below grade level, a Tier Two intervention is proposed to occur within the classroom setting. Now, we were intentional when we were looking at these two programs. We wanted to make sure there was cultural responsiveness, because we want to make sure all students will benefit from the program. The program has been implemented five months now in several of our schools. What we found out, teachers have the power of having another tool, a data point, to assess their students. Remember the running records? Now, the program does it for the students. And so the teachers can pull that information and that data, along with alleviates some of the pressures for teachers for differentiation, especially our new teachers. Those are one of the things we have to model for them, but the program now does it for them, and they can pull that data. Another thing that we saw, that teachers will be able to provide parent information with their child, where the student is performing, and then it provides the report, so the teachers can look over it, and they can provide assistance at home or where their student need that additional support. Also, parents can visibly see how to work with them, because they will bring suggestions of what to do at home. Core Five, like everyone has already said, it is a good component of HMH, especially in the ELA curriculum, as it works well together, focused on grade-level standards, while providing the scaffolding for students as well as teachers. Sometimes our students get stuck in a place, and our teachers have that difficulty of what is the next steps? So the program provides that scaffold for those teachers. There's also instruction in Spanish. And then when we talk about Lexia Power Up, which is being implemented, I mean, piloted within our secondary school, one of our secondary schools. Students are exposed to grade-level standards, and there are nine different languages where students can receive instructions in their home language. We have Tasha, a literacy coach from Washington, and then we have Ade, who's a literacy coach at Sullivan. They can speak to how the program is going. I'm going to start with Ade, because it's elementary.
So Sullivan Elementary, we started piloting Core Five February 12. In four weeks, 132 students are working on literacy skills at grade level or above, comparing to 91 that initially were tested in the screening. 33% of our students have moved to grade-level literacy skills or above in grades kindergarten to second grade. Talking about progress, 2,082 literacy skills have been completed. It's an average of five skills per student. Core Five has 21 levels, and each level has literacy skills. When the students finish a level, they get a certificate. Up to today, 490 certificates have been printed and delivered to the students. Core Five has also had a very positive impact in our new-to-the-students, new-to-the-country students in fourth, in grades four and five. In the initial screening, they screened pre-K. Now, after four weeks, they are working on literacy skills in English, equivalent to a mid-year kindergarten. So that's almost half-year growth in four weeks. Teachers are using Core Five lessons to plan their small group instructions. They are able to use an extra data point to do either a small group incorporating in their small group instruction or provide one-to-one confering. Teachers are using Core Five as part of the leadership workplaces. So they are not taking out of their universal instruction. It's part of the universal instruction. When the students complete levels, they have the ability, teachers have the options to do the Lexia Skills Builders, which is extra activities for the students to completely be solid on those skills, and they can continue moving up. Core Five does not hold the students back on the contrary. It's an ongoing learning. During parent-teacher conferences, our parents were thrilled to see the reports. They're colorful, and they're very easy friendly. They're so easy to interpret. Parents were very excited to see a visual of their students' growth in this program. They were also providing ideas of how to work, how to help their students at home. Core Five has given Sullivan teachers, my colleagues, a unique and valuable insight into each student's learning path, while our students experience a platform of encouragement and ongoing learning.
Thank you. Again, I'm from Washington Middle School, and I like to talk about our student successes. So Lexia Power Up is what we use. And our students are closing the gaps within the areas of word study, grammar, and comprehension. In roughly four months, our student body has made gains and are continuing to grow. For example, 50% of our seventh graders comprehended texts at a K through two level when they completed our placement test. Now about 60% are comprehending and accessing texts at an intermediate level. That's growth. Intermediate is three through five. The object is for this program to allow our kids to be on grade level. This shows that we're closing the gaps with a personalized learning plan. Our emerging bilingual students are receiving individualized instruction in English language. They're acquiring more than 15 units a week, which equates to English language proficiency. So if they continue on with the program, we'll continue closing the gaps and with the ultimate goal of our students being on grade level.
Are you finished? Okay. Because once I push it, it's off. Thank you to all of you for presenting tonight. In conclusion, our governance request is for the Board of Education to approve the allocation of ESSR funds for the purchases of the K-8 ELA resources that are represented within the proposal. For the, of SRF funds for the purchases of the K eight ELA resources that are represented within the proposal.
Thank you. Other questions, Brian, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, let me kind of try and gather them all up. I, I noticed that specifically in the middle school, it's a pretty close difference compared to the other ones between the two resources. And I'm wondering if you could share with us the strengths of any of the programs that weren't selected. And I'm looking in a specific area. We have students that move in and out of our district on a regular basis. So I know that um, I think it was you that was talking about HMH, uh, the tutorials that are, are pretty quick within there. Do any of these have, hopefully these have strengths that you've noticed for students that are coming in and out of our buildings? And uh, if you could tie that into also talking about any of the strengths that weren't selected. Am I making sense on that kind of, all right?
Um, I think in middle school, it boils down to the texts. So when we were talking as a middle school team about what resource we were interested in. We were mostly interested in the texts that were available for our students. Um, through piloting HMH, we have found that the texts within the program are highly engaging. Our students are very interested in them. They're very rigorous, but at the same time, um, through conversation, our students can access them. Going forward, we know that there will be an option for book clubs for our students still with books that are already previously approved. Um, so that will also offer another opportunity for students to access um, culturally linguistically responsive texts. Um, in terms of the students moving in and out, we have actually at Red Smith received a lot of new students within the past several weeks. It is extremely easy for our students to just sort of hop on and um, use the platform. Because students are using HMH and science, it's actually even easier because they are already familiar with the platform. So it provides a very easy transition for our students, um, in middle school especially.
Keep going.
Our previous, our curriculum that we're in currently has weeks where you might be reading a book for four to six weeks. So now it's about one week, it's about four or five days. So we've actually had the same experience where our students can come in and it's much easier than in the past to get them started. We've also found that a lot of students we've had have already had experience with this curriculum, which is interesting. So it is popular around us. And then in terms of the other curriculum, I know a big part of it was being on that team that looked at both. They were pretty neck and neck, they were very similar in a lot of ways. So we just didn't have an obvious kind of winner um, for the middle school level. It doesn't mean that one is better or one isn't, it's just that they had a lot of the same qualities.
So I'll just add on to this. So when it came to that final decision around, it was a K eight, we, the survey came out with a K eight scope and sequence. So because they were close and elementary was so high, that that's why it went with the HMH for the pilot.
I wouldn't want it to obviously be the sole decision of, you know, the familiarity between science and the language arts with the, the companies. But I think that is significant that when students get used to working within a particular program and the delivery of it, I think it's, it's a significant part. Not, should be by no means a deciding factor with it, but it does make sense that just the same pattern and approach that, so thank you.
So in the elementary grades, the, the percentage of teachers that preferred this particular um, program was what 76, 76? But was it a close um, evaluation? Or was it just hands down, this is a much better um, program than the other option that you evaluated?
From my perspective from the data I saw was pretty much a hands down HMH for elementary. Yep.
And just one more, so unfamiliar with the process. Generally speaking, how big of a differentiator is price? Are all textbooks kind of priced around the same price point or is there a large distribution of price points?
Well, I asked them to give me a, a quote to write off the bat and they were, they're, they're very similar in what they quote, yeah.
Thank you. Just not having a comparison, you know, it's just, I need to ask the question, thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Do you feel that the one that was selected is overwhelmingly better? Or do you feel that we may have swung and missed on the second choice?
So just speaking from our building level perspective, a lot of teachers chose to not even spend time filling out the form and providing feedback around the other resource that we were looking at. And the community did have the option as well, it wasn't just left to the teachers. This was opened up to the entire community to um, come and see the resources, make decisions around what they felt was best for our, our community's children. Um, but having uh, already adopted a resource that is part of the publishing company that we were, was the alternative. And utilizing their online platform, which has been incredibly challenging for our teachers to use our Palabras Azul Paso Spanish word study. Um, resource, util is a, is a service product and their online um, platform is incredibly challenging to use. It's very, very difficult to share with students. Um, our Spanish language arts teacher has gone through multiple rounds with their customer service and while in person, they're very lovely to work with. Ultimately, the technology becomes a barrier to being able to push out anything to our students. The resources themselves are also at first glance nowhere near as engaging or as scaffolded in a way that supports teacher instruction. So.
All right, anybody else?
I have something to add about that. As a native speaker, I had the opportunity to read all the Spanish resources. And I'm very glad to see authentic materials. The language is a high language, a, a high academic language, which I feel very proud to see that our students will have access to that type of language.
Thank you. Please.
Um, so in terms of like teachers and feeling like we missed the boat. All of our teachers in our building are so excited about the new resource. Our teachers that are piloting are thrilled to have this new resource and rave about it all the time. We've had teachers come in to watch the, the trial in action and they're so excited. They come to me and they're like, well, why can't we start it now? Um, so I think in terms of like whether or not this is the right resource, at least in our building, I've heard nothing but positives for it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, um, all right, I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to see you all. All right, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the board if they would like to take a break now or if they can make it through to operations. You want to finish up?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, these, these men have been so patient, I feel for you. Three, three minute break, everybody. Okay, we should get back at it, guys. All right. Jason, always, always good to see you.
It's always good to be here.
You've been very patient. All right. Um, have at it.
I'm here to answer any questions you may have related to the new five year renewal for the charter school.
Jason, can you just highlight the two major changes, please?
The big shifts will be the gradual drawdown of the 12th grade program. So as we decrease enrollment for 12th graders only, the comprehensive schools will be building their own pathways to help students maintain grades and graduate from their home schools. In addition, we're going to be adding sixth grade in two years. We applied for a grant with the Wisconsin Department of Instruction for a million dollars. We'll find out in June. We are going to add sixth grade regardless of the results of that grant. However, it would be a lot better if we have a million dollars to play with. And I say play. And then we're also going to be creating an 11th grade program for students who are disengaged from the school that we're going to consider our, our sandbox of innovation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Lynn.
So now I'm really confused. Um, so what you're, you're going to do is gradually just end the 12th grade program?
Correct.
You're not saying you're ending the program for other grades, just 12th grade?
12th grade, so right now we serve between 180 and 225 12th grade students who enrolled just. Beginning next year, we'll start a gradual decrease. At the same time, the comprehensive schools will be creating their own programs so that those students won't have to enroll with us. In year five, we will still have an academy program of 30 students that only our students who have previously enrolled in our school could attend. So we won't be taking outside enrollment. Our focus now is in increasing our enrollment at the middle school grades so that we can continue to explore opportunities and close those gaps. When we get students at 10th and 11th grade, it is incredibly difficult to throw, close a six to eight year gap in literacy and math. So some of those numbers you saw today. So the academy provides an opportunity at a competency based level for them to earn their high school diploma, take college classes, participate in work-based learning. But those opportunities are going to be pushed into the comprehensive schools, so they don't have to leave.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Let's tie this really long statement into a question. So one of the great things about a charter school program, especially one that's chartered by a public school district is it creates that playground. Or the sandbox approach of finding out what works specifically within, in this example, it would be within our district and what we can build on for our high school students. And that's, that's the intent of a public school charter, correct?
Correct. And outlined in our new grant proposal, there are specific opportunities we must take to meet with the district and share what is happening in our schools. And that happen, has to happen on a regular basis. We've also volunteered our teaching staff to go into the comprehensive schools and work with the individual schools to help them create and learn from all the wonderful mistakes we got to make along the way.
Go ahead, James.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. Lynn asked the question about 12th grade, 12th grade is not going away. You're just seeing that students will start earlier and progress into 12th grade. So you'll have a full complement of seniors, they've just been in the program longer than just showing up uh, at the 12th grade. So. Being a, being a charter school and understanding your mission, right? I'm, I'm drawn to the fact that you start feeling like another comprehensive, uh, a high school, right? That has less flexibility. I had always envisioned this as that opportunity where if someone isn't succeeding, they have a place to go and get personalized pathway up to graduation. So, um. What effort is it and how successful have we seen? Because it feels like you're pushing back to comprehensive high schools, take care of your own after a certain period of time. Um, kind of, how did we get here and um, why, why make this change?
The goal had always been for the academy program to not exist anymore. It was created, I don't know how many years ago, maybe nine or 10, not, not that long, maybe nine. With the goal of the comprehensive high schools developing some programming to help keep the kids there instead of sending them to Manoco, which is where we initially started the program. Uh, so he's fulfilling that part of the deal. And then uh, David Johns is working with the comprehensive high schools to ensure that we're able to offer similar programming to uh, what the academy was doing to great success, but keeping the kids at their school.
Right.
You talked about um, students being disengaged and trying to decrease on that. This is going to be a tricky answer on here considering that you have two different groups of students and two different approaches on a lot of the areas there. Would you say the, I feel unfair even asking this question, so if you can't answer it, that's fine, or if someone else can. Would you feel that the level of disengagement is less or more based on the approach you're taking? Does that kind of make sense? Are we being effective in decreasing the level of disengagement in the program?
Specific to our program?
If you have students at a comprehensive high school and you have students at N W, is the level of disengagement? Are we making gains on decreasing the level of disengagement as opposed to what you'd see at a comprehensive high school? Am I kind of being clear on that?
I think so.
Yeah, I, I think I'll just say if, if we change nothing in the comprehensive high schools, this isn't going to work. If, if we don't recognize that within our comprehensive high schools, there are ways to explore some specialized pathways and some unique support structures that aren't even about a student coming back from the academy at N W. It's about a student that never went there in the first place because when they were ninth grade, we became aware of something. Maybe when they came in as eighth, eighth to ninth, we became aware of something that would say, for this student, here's some needs and right down that hallway is where we can meet it. And I would say that um, it's a, it's a beautiful moment in our history where this is not about a push and a pull. This is about.
This is about a mutual understanding and again, uh, through efforts led within, uh, teaching and learning, student services about alternative pathways. Um, we've lit a fire within our comprehensive high schools and our, and our leaders are excited to inherit this opportunity and to rebuild some things new in their school and, and the ability to access, uh, uh, the teachers at NEW in kind of a consultative way around what's worked, um, and realize that you don't need to leave a comprehensive high school to have a lot of those aspects of your learning still in place. It's a, it's a great opportunity for us and it's a really special moment in our history where everyone's rallied around the same cause.
Gonna butt in at the risk of this. Our school's an inequity in itself. We've, we pull kids out of a school for something that they should have in a comprehensive. So by allowing students to stay in their school, um, David John spoke to the panorama survey. One of our lowest scoring areas is student connectedness to our school. The largest group that, uh, gave feedback were our twelfth graders. They want to be a part of their home schools. They want that ability to stay there. Our highest level was the connection with the adults in our buildings. We're making those connections, but they wanna be at East High School. They wanna graduate from East High School. So this ability fulfills that need. We're always gonna have students that wanna do things differently and try different things. So and that's where our student bucket's gonna come from. But I think allowing a student to have that opportunity grants them what our kids are telling us that they want anyways.
So David, um, cause I've been out to NEW, I've seen it and I, I understand how different that program is. Can you just paint a quick picture of what needs to change at our comprehensive high schools and what you intend to do to make it them successful in taking these students?
Yeah, in, in, um, conversations and even preliminary work with the high school principals around what, what are some of the shifts, what, what needs to happen? There's conversations around, um, how we grade students and how they can make progress and demonstrate their progress in ways that aren't as much tied to the school calendar as they are to the real time progress that students are making. That's a hallmark of the NEW program. And, and frankly, one of the reason why kids are successful there when they, um, are no longer successful in a school where a calendar drives a lot of that decision-making. Other ways to configure students in smaller learning communities, having one teacher who is qualified through licensure to support students across multiple subject areas mirrors some of the successes at NEW where students don't engage with eight different staff members over the course of the day. So some of those, some of those hallmarks are replicable and are already being explored as to how we can do that.
You know, I become interested because I, I know that we have many pathways and I know each of those pathways, uh, there's a monetary aspect of that. Now I'd be really interested as you develop this, understanding how we value, um, you know, like the per pupil perspective, those types of changes because it feels, um, much more, uh, smaller, um, you know, cohorts and everything, which as we are going through consolidations and making sure that our, you know, FTE to student ratios are all balanced and everything, I'd really like to understand. You know, the, the impact of that on budget and things like that as you, as you develop that program.
And I think that would even intersect with some other areas where we invest in students, um, attempting to earn a credit a second and third time. And so anytime we have an opportunity to create a different way for students to earn original credit, we have to balance that against what we, what we are spending, um, and often spending in offering the student the same exact experience that wasn't successful the first time. So that's all part of the calculation.
Excuse me, anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night. All right, next is Head Start.
Okay, the first one for Head Start, uh, Green Bay Area Public School District Head Start is for year five of five in our federal grant cycle. The funds we are applying for are categorized as program operations for a sum of four million, six hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and three. And the training and technical assistance for some thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety. For a total of four million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three in funding. With this grant, we will be able to continue to serve three hundred and thirty-six Head Start students housed between Jefferson Head Start and the Head Start Learning Center. Oh, great. Okay. And Rachel is here as well to respond to any questions if you have any.
Hi, Rachel.
Hi, everybody.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Rachel?
Okay.
All right, then we can move on.
Uh, this one's for a budget revision. We are seeking approval from the Board of Education to transfer fifty thousand from the current Head Start Personnel Budget to the Indirect Cost Budget. This adjustment is necessary due to an omission in our earlier budget planning where indirect costs were not accounted for. Indirect costs play a crucial role reporting essential functions that may not be directly tied to personnel like administrative expenses, facilities maintenance, and other operational necessities.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Andrew.
And this, just to be clear, this is out of, um, unspent funds. There's no, there's no layoff. There's no position not being hired is to unspent funds.
That's correct.
Right.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, we're moving into operations. Um, first is, um, our benefits recommendations. Hello?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for your interest and attention tonight on the various topics. It's another in-depth evening, so we really appreciate that. My name is Mike Fries and I'm proud to serve our students and staff, uh, at this time and on behalf of, uh, the Human Resources Department. I work in the HR department along with a couple of the colleagues, uh, that I have brought with, uh, this evening. Angela Cox and Jessica Cortez, they do very important and detailed work to help administer our district's benefits plan. They are part of a team of very dedicated HR staff, including Cheryl Cooper and Jennifer Bartels, who also assist our staff in ensuring that they can maximize their benefits and they get answers to sometimes very, very complicated questions in very stressful situations. We are also extremely grateful for, uh, our fourth colleague, uh, who's here this evening, if I may be so bold as to call you a colleague. Beck Krasinski from M3 Insurance is our, uh, benefits employee benefits advisor. We rely on her and her colleague Liz and her other colleagues, uh, at M3 very frequently. Um, I made a joke about the number of emails and phone calls per day. We probably should cut back on those. We're, but we're very grateful for the partnership and the support, um, the education you provide all of us, uh, both to help us grow as an organization and to understand, um, industry standards relative to benefits plans that are appropriate and supportive of our employees' needs. So our understanding is that, uh, we come to you annually for, um, uh, approval on recommendations for changes to our benefits plans as well as to provide you some updates on how the plans are working. Uh, this is not done in isolation. It's done in conjunction with, uh, input from a wide variety of stakeholders. Uh, we have a group that we apparently used to call the Benefits Advisory Committee. It will now call the Benefits Advisory Work Team, but that acronym just doesn't roll off the tongue quite as well. So, um, the members of the soon to be called BOT, um, wait, that actually kinda works. Uh, we've got nearly two dozen folks, uh, representing our, um, in various employee groups, uh, including a strong representation from leadership from the GBEA and the AFSMI, uh, organization. Uh, we also have already put out of the kind of semi-annual shout out in our staff scoop, saying if anybody is interested in learning more about benefits and contributing on the work team, um, we would love to have you. So we still have at least one more meeting this spring yet. And we kinda sets the stage for where, where we head next. So, um, with all of that being said, uh, we'd really appreciate, uh, again, the time and attention this evening. And we're happy to answer questions after we go through some summaries. Uh, Beck is gonna start us out, um, initially and, uh, take it away.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Uh, Jess, if you'd go to the next slide, please. Or Kinsey, if you can help us get to the next slide. There we go. Thanks very much. All right. So during two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four benefits plan year, which aligns with your fiscal year, we focused on employee education and evaluating our employee benefits offerings. Uh, this aligns with strategies that we've worked on in previous years, but we continue to build off of the feedback that we receive from your benefits advisory work team. As well as, you know, the conversations that we have with staff and the feedback that we receive. This year, open enrollment communications was a major area of focus. Um, and I'll speak more to that in an upcoming slide. We focus on how to use that health reimbursement arrangement, cost-saving opportunities for members, and then really evaluating, building on the work that we did last year and making some plan design changes, but evaluating our offerings for financial stability and then how those offerings help us to meet the district's recruiting and retention goals. All right. So, uh, I'm super excited about this. Uh, through our employee education efforts, we broke M3's system of communicating benefits to employees. It was only a temporary break, but what we didn't realize is that our system had a limit to the number of minutes that any one particular piece of employee benefit material can be viewed. Um, our benefits change presentation had over, uh, eight thousand four hundred views, over seventy-five hundred unique viewers, and over forty-six thousand minutes of content watched. Those three presentations listed up on the screen are, um, our top three within that whole list of additional presentations that we put together for your staff and for retirees and their families to view. And those top three presentations alone had over a hundred thousand minutes of viewed content. So I'm, I'm super jazzed about that. I didn't realize that we had a limit. Now we know. Um, and we will have, uh, additional limits for the upcoming year, but, um, I share that with you because we, uh, the HR team and our team made a really diligent effort to make sure that the material reached all of the members uh, and that they were incentivized to view the content to become better informed members of, uh, their plan.
In fact, that's one of the things that is really, really nice, uh, of the adults in our organization. They are very motivated to, to be savvy consumers of their benefits and to understand them and the significant changes that you approved for this, um, plan year, uh, has really shown us the sorts of, uh, education areas that folks, uh, continue to, to want to be supported in and learning about. Uh, the Benefits Advisory Committee that gathered this year initially, the primary focus was a discussion relative to, uh, the main topic that was discussed in our focused on understanding how people are utilizing benefits, um, but also, um, focusing as a specific topic as it pertains to potential cost savings for the district and, um, a more streamlined experience in this, in this area. And that was the topic of income protection plan versus a externally managed short-term disability plan. And so last year, the Benefits Advisory Committee, uh, was learning about income protection plans versus short-term disability plans. And, um, the income protection plan as it's outlined in our employee handbook is a district-run program. But short-term disability plans would be run by, um, an external entity and you would have to decide, would it be funded by the school district or opted into and funded by an employee? So, um, we took all the questions that the Benefits Advisory Committee brought to us around this and then went out to market, if that's the correct term, asking, um, various companies to respond to the questions that we had and offer us some proposals. So well over a dozen scenarios and ideas were sent out to market, um, and they brought back some things for us to consider. And what we've been able to narrow down from those over a dozen scenarios in dialogue, input, feedback from the Benefits Advisory Team, um, and in concert with senior administration and talking with finance, um, talking back with M3 and kind of refining and refining. Uh, we, we decided that, and Vicky hinted at this earlier tonight, um, pursuant to, uh, what, um, Mr. Becker brought forward, the idea of let's bring you a choice, uh, so you have two scenarios to pick from when it comes to IPP versus, um, a short-term disability. So one choice, one renewal consideration would be maintaining our current income protection plan program. That is a benefit that provides income protection after someone has exhausted their sick leave and it currently pays out eighty-two and a half percent of the regular rate of pay for one hundred and ninety or one hundred and ninety-one days, depending on the type of employee. Now that program does not include coverage during the summer months unless the person is a twelve-month employee. There's some other factors and, um, four bullets is, 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 is just four bullets. We could give you a four, forty-four bullets, probably outlining every scenario that this, this may take place in. Uh, but what we've done is we've looked at the numbers, the average cost over the past five years of the district paying for the IPP plan, um, is about seven hundred thousand. Okay, uh, the highest year we had are in the past five ran eight hundred and two thousand. Um, and so the average that was seven oh two. Okay, so one option, again, make no change. Keep it exactly as is. Okay, we estimate that it costs between that seven and eight hundred thousand a year. An alternative, uh, based on what's out there in the marketplace, uh, based on industry standards would be adopting what's called a short-term disability plan. And we, we're, uh, we brought forward a renewal consideration where it would be the district would still foot the bill for that. The company's name is called The Standard and the benefit would be a sixty percent benefit uh, of their pre-disability earnings with a maximum limit hit on a weekly amount. And it would cover eleven weeks and it would include the summer. So if you're a teacher and you went out on, on this short-term disability, you would continue to receive the funding in the summer months. Whereas in our current IPP plan, you would not. As you can see, the amount is, is a smaller amount. Um, and there's something called elimination periods that determine when that benefit would kick in. And you would have the external entities that, that moderate this to help with, um, the return to work as well as evaluations. Okay? Based on our current enrollment, the, the rough number estimates, um, heading into next year would be if this was adopted, it would bring down our costs to about five hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Again, that's an estimate. They, uh, as part of the proposal, they've included some performance guarantees and some, and options as well as some, some financial pieces that are an implementation credit that helped reimburse us when we have someone that may be, um, allowed to come back on light duty but may need an accommodation item such as, oh, I need a particular chair or a stand-up desk or an assistive technology piece. There's funding that would support the purchase of that. Currently, we, we foot the bill for that, um, as a district and then a, a performance guarantee. So again, the two choices, stay status quo with rough estimates on what we've had each of the past five years. Uh, or, uh, adopt, uh, a potentially money-saving opportunity with a, with a change in the benefit outcomes. Okay? There are pros and cons to any choice such as this, right? So some of the considerations when trying to decide what to do, the, the experience of, of our members as they would transition from a short-term disability to long-term disability in consultation and coordination with their life insurance. Having an external entity, uh, help us with that, uh, is a smooth process. It is, that would be a, a positive thing as far as the efficiency in the organization for the employee and the department in the district. Uh, it would allow us to improve and enhance how we track leaves and make, um, keep up with the, the accounting pieces, oversight and verification of these leaves, um, based on disability experts and medical personnel. And, um, because of the program that, that is supported in this, the opportunity for, um, getting folks back to work more quickly with more targeted, you know, light duty pieces or incentives to get back to work. Okay? So that's why, why we believe that it's a very viable option to bring forward for your consideration. We recognize that it changes the amount of, um, funds that somebody may be receiving, but we believe that the, the trade-off in terms of the other benefits that are part of it makes it a worthy recommendation for your consideration. We did narrow this down from like seven choices down to two, just to let you know. So we along with this, um, should we bring something like this on board? We'd have, we would have the opportunity to bring in, um, a more advanced absence leave management process for managing FMLA as well. Uh, when, when this says absent management services, it doesn't mean, oh, I need a substitute teacher. I'm out on Tuesday. That's not what that means. This would pertain to how you manage FMLA, um, along with short-term, long-term disability. Okay? And then the next slide. Yep. So again, one choice we would be ask you to make at some point this month would be stick with IPP or transition to STD. And if there are other questions that come out of that, we're happy to research those or bring you the details, um, for that as well.
So since you gave us two options, um, and my to understand that the Benefits Advisory Committee, um, are there, there's no difference. There, there's, there's not gonna be a, if you make this choice, there's going to be a, a issue with adoption. there's going to be a, a issue with adoption or they're equal when it comes to the perception at the committee level.
I would not say they're equal, no. I think that there are, there are pros and cons by all the people around the table at, at, at the committee.
Is, can you communicate, is it appropriate to communicate consensus or what their recommendation would be? Or is this really just A, B, decision is ours?
Consensus of the committee is to bring the board these two options.
So you're not making a recommendation? Okay.
Anything else, Andrew?
Yep, so I'm looking at just the numbers here and it looks like if you didn't even account for the fact that takes longer before it starts, fourteen days to go to the, the, the short-term disability. If you didn't even count that, just the, and you looked at just the difference between the difference between sixty percent and eighty-two and a half percent, like just that proportion almost takes care of a difference between seven hundred and five twenty-seven already, except there's still a lot more different than that. So if you have one thing that lasts many more days potentially and pays much more and starts quicker, then how come it's relatively modest twenty-five percent or so savings to have it start later, pay quite a bit less and stop paying much sooner? And I know, I, I know that there, I know that people using more than eleven weeks are probably not that common, but nonetheless, lot of differences in benefit and low difference in cost.
Right, I appreciate that. And I'll have Beck can comment on some of those details as I turn it over to her. This is the, one of the most complicated topics I've personally dealt with since being employed in the district. And it was, it, I apologize for, i- if, we didn't mean to oversimplify anything. You're hitting on really specific points that are really important. So I don't know, Beck, are you able to share a little bit from your perspective addressing some of those? And if there are some things that we don't fully answer tonight, we're more than happy to provide you those details because they do exist. So absolutely.
So a couple of things that I share, Andrew. First is that the short-term disability proposal for the employer paid option does include an experience rating refund. So in the event that the claims experience is actually less than what the premium called for in that five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar estimate, then those additional premiums paid go into a claims fund to fund future year claims. And if the district leaves the standard or if the district were to decide to at some point self-fund this plan, then those funds come back to the district. So there is protection from the district there. But I think, Andrew, the point that you're getting at is, you know, how come the discount isn't greater? And that's the actuarial analysis of the potential exposure for the district. So that would lead us to believe that, you know, the, the highest year being eight hundred and two thousand, that the district really has additional exposure, given how the actuaries have rated the short-term disability premium with a plan that offers the fourteen fourteen elimination period and the sixty percent benefit.
Okay, are you saying that, are you saying that the actuarial analysis might suggest that we were lucky to have maybe ever been this low? Is that kind of where you're going with it?
Yeah, I think what I would say is that, you know, we're using a five-year average that takes into account two years of COVID. We know that that highest year of utilization was eight hundred and two thousand dollars. But when the standard does their analysis, they're looking at how many, and any carrier, not just the standard, but how many sick leave days do your employees have? What is the likelihood, given their age and their gender, that they may go out on a disabling condition? There are different functions for, at what level of full-time employment the benefit is offered and the district offers that benefit down to employees that work as few as five and a half hours per week. And so that, you know, leads to a greater value in terms of the utilization expected from that plan. To all of those functions combined.
Okay, so you probably couldn't go out and even have someone sell you what the district has. I bet probably it's, it's awfully generous and so forth. So the, the answer to my question, I, I think what I'm hearing is that the first one, you wouldn't even be able to buy on the open market. And the second one, and while we never even hit a million bucks on it in the last five years, that's really good. And so that's why you'd have a different, if, if the two were even sold, there would be a massive difference in price.
You're, you're absolutely right on that.
Also suggesting that what we've had over a five-year deal, something has gone right then, because it's a very, a fairly generous benefit that's only a bit more than. And so I'm sure, and that's why, probably why two came forward to the table.
Great, James?
I have a follow-up because I, I do think number one is a very rich benefit as well. And it's a hundred and ninety days. Can you explain how it interacts with LTD? Because I, I think LTD would kick in a lot earlier than a hundred and ninety days and it may speak to your question.
Yes, certainly I can answer that. Yes, in some cases that LTD benefit does kick in sooner. There's the ninety-day elimination period. Once the IPP is done to have someone transition to long-term disability, where that one ninety-one really comes in is if someone were to be denied that long-term disability, then we do give them the IPP benefit for that one ninety or one ninety-one.
Can you give an example of the types of, or example of a, a situation, obviously without naming anybody, but like what, what, what would that look like? Is that, what is that for? Meaning somebody isn't classified as in need of long-term disability, but they stay out. Is it related to maternity leave, paternity leave, you know, et cetera?
Yes, usually would be other conditions where they evaluate it. They have their very set definition of disability that they're looking for. And a lot of times what I hear back is they're not disabled within their occupation. So they're going to deny them long-term disability benefits.
How often does that happen?
I would say I've seen it happen, but not frequently. Trying to think of roughly an estimate. I would say the majority of people, eighty to ninety percent are probably approved for long-term disability, but there are a select handful that are not. Yes, we also do have, as Beck was mentioning, we do have employees too that do end up coming back from long-term disability. So just keeping that in mind as well, not everybody who goes out never returns. Some are actually on it for a very, very short period of time. They just hit that ninety days, needed to apply, but then they were able to recover and return. So that's good.
Anybody else? Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to share?
Not on this topic at this point, but we've got some information about the, how the plan has been utilized throughout the course of the year.
All right, so I'm in a transition to talking about the medical plan then. Shown on the screen is the utilization by plan design, comparing our current plan year to date to last year, looking at the full twelve months of the plan year. So when we look at all plans combined, last year for the full year, we were at a hundred and six percent loss ratio, meaning that we took in less premium than what we paid out in claims. Currently, all plans combined with data were at a hundred and two percent loss ratio. So improved from last year, but still not collecting as much in premium to cover the, the value of the claims. Our active plans currently are at a ninety-seven percent loss ratio compared to a hundred and two percent where they finished the year last year. And our retiree plans currently at a hundred and thirty-one percent loss ratio compared to a hundred and forty-three percent last, last year. So while those numbers are still over a hundred percent, we did see a really healthy decrease in utilization, indicating that the shifts that were made last year in plan designs did have a positive impact on the utilization of the health plan. We also saw some pretty interesting changes in enrollment on the plan designs. Not all of these unexpected, but looking more closely at those plan designs, we saw a decrease of a hundred and seventy total contracts. That means total employees or retirees who selected one of the districts offered health plans. Our active employee plan count decreased by a hundred and five and our retiree plans decreased by sixty-five. Over the course of the spring and into the summer, we had several retiree-specific meetings this year. You may recall that conversation from last year, but both group meetings and individual meetings, over fifty I just met with my colleague Jason, who specializes in Medicare plans. And many of the retirees who switched to alternative healthcare plans outside of the district's plan saved tens of thousands of dollars in their personal healthcare premium costs by making a different selection, which also had a positive impact on the district's plan utilization. The next chart is a little bit difficult to read, but this is the chart that we show you each time that we're here to compare the various different plans that are offered by the district as well as comparison to where they were at this point last year. So I'll draw your attention to the funding ratio line towards the middle of the chart and then also to the prior year funding ratio that's shown right below it in a separate bar. So all plans combined, like we discussed, at a hundred and two percent right now. Last year at this time, they were also at a hundred and two percent. What's different about this year is that last year at this time, we knew that we had some very significant high-cost claims that would be continuing to hit the plan through June. At this point this year, we're not expecting, or we don't have knowledge of anything that we know will hit the plan between here and the end of June. Our actives currently at that ninety-seven percent, retirees a hundred and thirty-one percent. And then our dental plan currently at a hundred and five percent as compared to ninety-five percent last year. So a couple increases that you saw in the memo that we wanted to bring to you this evening. Our risk management team calculated a two-point-two-four percent increase needed to maintain the plan designs on the active plans, a five-point-nine percent increase on the retiree plans and a five-point-eight percent increase on the dental plans for the upcoming year. And Jessica will review those recommendations.
Thank you. For the twenty-four, twenty-five plan year, we're recommending no design changes for this year in addition to continuing other provisions of the plan based on the feedback from our employees as well as the practices for providing access to high-quality, low-cost care. The plan isn't changing and our focus continues on maintaining and improving the member experience, maximizing benefits, response, support from carriers and our vendor partners. Education and communication has been and will continue to be an area of focus in the upcoming year.
I just want to jump in and, and, and share that we've really appreciated opportunities from our colleagues in other departments as well as from the leadership of the GBEA that has invited Jessica to come out to schools, to department meetings and the GBEA meetings multiple times to help explain how to utilize the benefits, how to, how to make sure that you're not losing money through your prescriptions or the, et cetera. So that's been a, the member education piece that, that she's highlighting there.
Yeah, like Mike said, it was a lot of focus on the HRA plan, how to submit your claims and get that money back and letting them know that it's your money, utilize it. So in order to continue to offer competitive health insurance benefits, the benefits advisory committee, HR, finance, with the support of M three, are making the recommendations to keep the plans for twenty-twenty-four as currently offered and then distribute the premium increase based on utilization of the health plan. So like Beck had said, the two-point-two-four percent for actives and then the five-point-nine percent for the retirees. The next couple of slides will show the twenty-twenty-three plan year rates and then the increase for the twenty-twenty-four. So this first one is the active employee rates with the fifteen hundred dollar deductible. And then we go into the retiree rates. This is the five hundred dollar per person deductible and prescription. This plan does need to stay in place due to contractual obligations, so we are continuing this plan. We have the fifteen hundred dollar retiree plan rates with the increase, potential increase. And then the minimum or the high deductible. So the other offerings that we included, the dental, life and disability and vision insurance. Feedback from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-two, twenty-two, excuse me, to twenty-three led enhancements to the dental plan. Those have been utilized very well, so there is a small increase warranted for the dental plan, a five-point-eight percent increase. And then for vision, we are holding the rates through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five, so there'll be no increases in the vision. Okay, and that brings us back to long-term disability. So we are currently with, with MetLife as our carrier and we've been with them since twenty-twenty-one for our life insurance and our long-term disability. As you can see on the slide, we've had a lot of utilization and due to such, we are looking at an increase of about sixty-five thousand dollars. So with that said, we went back out to the market, looked who else was out there, who else is familiar with school districts, familiar with disability plans and who has good customer service. And we came back with a proposal from one of the competitive carriers, the Standard Insurance Company. And they are offering us a rate hold through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, and it would actually save us about fifty thousand dollars from where we're currently at when you consider both the life insurance and the long-term disability changes. So we are recommending that we do make a move at the start of the year to go over to the standard who had previously been our carrier.
So again, to summarize, we're asking you to make a recommendation based on the two finalists or two options, so IPP or a switch to an STD, a short-term disability. That's one, one ask we have of you. The second ask is the recommendations we're making for the rest of the benefits. Everything's holding the same in terms of coverage except for the, the premium increases and a change to the life insurance carriers you had just mentioned. So those are kind of the two sets of things that are happening. Are there any questions on that before we wrap up with our final slide? So far, yes.
So you only, you stayed on the slide with the, the amount for each of the healthcare offerings. It was hard for me to differentiate this year versus last year on that slide. It was pretty busy. But nowhere was there any discussion about the utilization of the HRA, right? Premiums don't fund the HRA. That's the, is there any data as to what the utilization of the HRA itself was?
There is, and I did not bring that with me this evening, so I'd be happy to provide that in follow-up.
So I, two things, right? Because I think that when we say that, you know, we're at a hundred and two percent loss ratio, but that's against a smaller premium because of the plan design changes last year, right? So I want to take that and add it to the HRA utilization to see overall what was the cost and compared to, you know, we, we had estimated that we were going to save X number of dollars by making those changes and I need, you need the HRA utilization to be able to kind of get there. That makes sense.
Absolutely, we can have that as follow-up. And then also, we know we did move through the slides somewhat quickly with the attachments and in the memo. I believe our part of the board documents tonight do allow you to see some of that standalone comparisons, if that's helpful.
I didn't see the presentation. Is that one of the, the rate sheets? But the presentation's not attached, so if that can just be distributed, I think that'll But the presentation's not attached, so if that can just be distributed, I think that'll answer a lot of my questions.
I just want to make one comment about the HRA utilization, being that we're not a full year in. And just hearing some of the feedback from going out to the GBEA, some of the teachers are going to be holding on to their HR claims till the end of the year. So it's kind of like a little bonus for the summer for them.
I, so when you said that, I realized that we haven't been in that a whole year, have we? Okay, that, that makes a lot of, is there any initial feedback? Cause you've been out there, cause. Moving from that low deductible, I think over the five hundred dollar HMO plan to a fifteen hundred with a reimbursement. What's the employee perception of having to be reimbursed? Is, is it positive, neutral? Is it negative? How was that experience?
I would offer, you know, as a general way of putting it, that if you can figure out how to do it, you're very satisfied. If you struggle to figure out how to do it, you're dissatisfied. And that's where the member education has come in. And sometimes it's been, oh, just give me the directions again. And other times it's been, let's sit down one-on-one and let's, let me walk you through it step by step. And sometimes it's even, I think I still screwed it up. Can you please see if they'll fix it for me? So that's definitely the member education. We're, we're learning how to try to make it as convenient, efficient and easy as possible, but opinions vary, correct? Yeah. Including from me, in my own life, right? Like, help Jess, I can't figure it out.
A lot of the feedback I do receive is yes, once they figure it out, it is an easy process. I personally don't have the app, but I've talked to a lot of people who do, and they said that is like the easiest thing to do. You just take a picture. Or if you already have it, you just upload it, boom, done. The one thing too, that I get a lot of feedback is DBS is very, very friendly. So if they have an issue, like the claim wasn't received or they're missing something, they call DBS, boom, it's taken care of. So I get a lot of positive feedback. It, it is a little extra work, but to claim that thousand or two thousand dollars, most people are going to do it. Right?
DBS stands for Diversified Benefit Services, sorry.
One other important note about the HRA is that the district's plan also allows for rollover. So with many members having this be their first year on the HRA plan. They could be making a choice as well to roll those dollars into the second year of the plan. So a lot of different variables with so many more members in the fifteen hundred dollar plan with the HRA benefit this year.
So we, I forgot, this has been an offering for a while. It's just the move. So we do have you, like, her participant average utilization on the HRA can be kind of, we can get at that number. Okay.
Right. Any other questions? Do you guys have anything else?
Yes, the last thing, it's on the slide there. It's, it's item number two. And it has to do with a transition that we are going to be rolling out. During the twenty-four, twenty-five plan year in anticipation of twenty-five, twenty-six, and that is moving away from requiring the personal health assessment. To get the premium incentive. And instead of saying you will get the premium incentive by making a wellness appointment with your regular physician. The research has shown that that is a more meaningful experience for members than, than the way the PHA works. Although that's, that's been a helpful one as well, but the feedback we've gotten in the benefits advisory committee brought it up and talked about it and did, you know. I don't want to say unanimous, because we didn't exactly vote. Everybody said, yeah, that makes sense. We support that move. So we'll be putting that in a place that does not require your vote this month or anything, but thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Could I, I know this is unusual, but I'm requesting that we change the order. If I could talk about G briefly and then move to H, because we have two guests that.
Yeah, they've been, they've been. Very, very.
Yeah, so if we could do G and then H and then go back up.
Okay.
I, I think we need to motion.
Oh, could someone make the motion?
I move that we. Adapt with flexibility to move G and H. To now.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
I oppose. Okay. All right, let's go to G.
That was great, Brian. Thank you.
Okay, we're talking about boundaries.
Yeah, we wanted to use tonight to remind the board and the public that, where we're at with the boundary adjustment advisory committee work. And to share that tomorrow kicks off. The public feedback portion, the first one. Consultants will, will be. Sorry, I'm looking for my notes. There will be two public meetings held tomorrow, Tuesday, March twelfth. The first one at twelve fifteen PM and the second at six PM at Neville Public Museum, right in the auditorium. Wolfert will be available there and they will present the conceptual boundary changes and then respond to any questions. The district will be using, we have the instant language assistant. Computers that will allow for translation. If members of the public need translation, they're asked to bring their device, a smartphone or a tablet, and we'll have those ready. They should also bring headphones. Viewing the maps. Neville's been a great partner with this and shout out to Lori Blakeslee for coordinating this opportunity. This week Neville is going to open up their museum. To allow for public viewing, not just tomorrow, but the rest of the week. Wednesday from noon to five PM, Thursday from eight AM to five PM and Friday eight AM to five PM. And while in the museum, they'll have an opportunity to listen to a recording of the presentation. Material will be there in multiple languages and then the public will have opportunity to provide feedback through QR code. QR code, so using their smart devices. In addition, the conceptual boundary maps will be available on the district website along with the video of the presentation. And an opportunity for feedback right on our website as well. The plan will be then to take that feedback, bring it back to the boundary adjustment advisory committee and rework based on what we're learning. And then in April and May, staff, families in the community will have another opportunity to provide feedback based on the adjustments. And then finally, a presentation will be to the Board of Education in June.
Great. Anybody have any questions about that? I'm planning on going to both tomorrow. I want to, I want to hear what people have to say and want to hear these presentations and. I'm looking forward to it, so. No questions. Okay. Then gentlemen, you are up. I just want to say again how much I appreciate your enormous patience with us. We have a huge agenda tonight, unusually dense and, you know. I'm just going to take a moment to editorialize here. We did, we're doing so much work, the work of the district tonight, and I would have hoped to see more people from the public here and maybe some media. Who might want to actually talk about all the good things that are happening in our district, but apparently not, so that's unfortunate. But we're very glad to have you joining us tonight, so take it away.
Sure. So I've included a memo on a recommendation from administration to take a look at partnering. With, with CISA's preferred partner for comprehensive program management services. So as, as you just heard, we were going through a transition in terms of our facilities and boundaries. And you'll be hearing a recommendation from that work group within a few months here. And to implement any of those recommendations is going to require some significant capital, along with some significantly complex construction projects. And we're likely talking about an amount greater than, than the district has ever asked for before. And a level of complexity beyond what, what the district has, has gone with before. So what, what Nexus Solutions provides is a single source of accountability for, for all of these projects. That includes preparation for a potential referendum. One of the attractive, one of the attractive pieces of, of using Nexus in addition to them having that CISA contract is that. They will help us prepare for that referendum and. If nothing passes, if we're not able to fund those capital improvements, we don't owe them anything, so they're taking the risk on that self, on themselves. If, if we are able to secure that capital. It's at that point that we pay for the services already rendered and then they help us through that next phase of actually implementing the project. So after talking to a couple of board members this week, it's kind of a weird pricing structure, right? And it, and the board policy is unclear on whether this requires approval. But after talking it through, we thought this was important enough to get in front of the whole board regardless, because there's a chance, you know, the contract could be worth nothing at all, right? Hopefully not. But I've, I've laid out kind of the, the fee schedule there and Kevin Hickman and Mike David are here from Nexus Solutions to answer any questions you might have. This is the sort of service that would be. It would be new for the district, certainly not new for districts in Wisconsin, but new for Green Bay and the way that we approach a capital ask.
Okay. Go ahead and introduce yourselves and I, I do have, my first question would be like, what are some other districts that you've done this kind of? Or have had this sort of arrangement with?
Want to introduce ourselves first? Yeah, all right. I'll go first. So Kevin Hickman. And I'm sure in Josh's discussions with you, he may have let you know, but we didn't just appear out of nowhere. We've been talking to the district for a number of months now and having some really fruitful conversations as we approach tonight, so we appreciate you taking the time and having us here. So my role on, in program management is essentially lead the team and make sure we marshal the right resources to support. Green Bay throughout a process like this. So I'm the day-to-day person that is either going to be physically here working on various issues. And managing the process and, and/or supporting the district and the board through the process.
And, excuse me, good evening. My name is Mike David. I'm the president of Nexus Solutions. And my role on, on the project, I'm still very hands-on with all of our projects. And I would be involved with strategy development, overall guiding of, of the, the overall effort.
You had asked the question, Laura, about districts around the state. So it's interesting, we work with districts as small as a few hundred students on up to districts, even a little bit larger than Green Bay. So Kenosha, Racine, Wausau, Stevens Point, Wisconsin Rapids, we're just got hired by Marshfield for a very similar approach. Working with them right now in preparation for a potential referendum for this fall. And locally though, Akana Falls under construction right now on a new middle school. Luxmer Casco had significant. Additions and renovations that we undertook for them within the last couple of years. I may be missing some.
No, just the, the Luxmer project is, is interesting in that obviously the close proximity to here, it's a very small district, but there are some parallels in that it involves closing a school, closing a school in, in Casco. Obviously, it's always a challenging thing for the community to do. And the effort that we led, Casco even supported the, the referendum at about fifty-seven percent support. So again, it's much, much smaller district, but again, there are some parallels to draw. We have, as a planning firm, we work with, with districts, you know, of all aspects of planning, so. The right technical solution, you know, making sure we have a truly pragmatic solution, the right financial solution, so it's affordable and also the right communication solution. And really have, there's, every community is certainly unique, but I don't think there's anything that we haven't seen. I mean, we've closed schools, we've re-engineered entire school districts in terms of numbers of schools, grade configuration, et cetera, et cetera. We've renovated, we've built new. And again, what, what Nexus does is provides, as Josh mentioned, that single source accountability from start to finish. So what was upfront is what's actually designed and built in the end. And again, we were very, very confident in, in what we're able to do. And as a result, we, the agreement is a three-phase agreement, phases one and two are kind of the planning phases that lead us through referendum. If we can't get support from the community for the referendum, you don't owe us anything. We, so we, we don't bill you anything along the way. Once we do get the referendum to pass and our track record is extremely good. Then we roll across the phases one and two into phase three and phase three is all priced at, at market rate pricing for, it's only, we, we provide professional services only. All of the, the trade contractor work, which is eighty-five to ninety percent of a, of a school facilities project is one hundred percent competitively bid. We don't, again, we, we don't self-perform any, any trade work. So from our standpoint, we have no interest in, in what the actual solution is. Our only interest is finding the right solution. We don't, we don't win more or less one way or, or the other, depending on, on what the nature of the work is. What we're truly looking for is rights, what's the right solution that we can, can help you get the community to support.
I'm going to assume that your services are in. Hot demand right now because of the way we fund education in this state.
We, yeah.
Well, I was just going to mention, just at a macro level, speaking of hot demand, in the last five to seven years, we've worked about seventy districts in the state. That's totaled about two and a half billion dollars in projects that were implemented. And I say projects only because that's easy for all of us to understand, but we're, we're really not project-based. We're, we're a program manager. We, we put a plan together. We help execute a master plan. We don't look at it as individual projects.
We have.
You guys have to share, by the way, you can just use that one right there. Yeah.
I like fighting with him over.
Yeah, so we, in, in terms of being a program manager, as Kevin mentioned, we, we often develop long-range plans for our clients. And we've got clients that we've had for over a decade and they're on phase three, phase four, et cetera, et cetera. But it all starts with step one, which is where we're at with you all tonight.
Uh, Brian?
Do you feel comfortable sharing what your success rate is compared to the state average? I love that question. Yeah, we are actually, we are undefeated, not always on the first try. I, and I, I don't know that that number off the top of my head, but I would say it's in the ninety percent range on the first try. All but two other districts have went on the second try and we've got two that have taken three tries. But we take a very. We, we are a company full of professionals, a lot of very technical, analytical, analytical people. We have the marketing communications folks as well, but when we look at helping a school district develop a long-range plan. It's all data-driven, including the referendum itself. We analyze the data, the data analytics of the voter data files to find out. You know, what, really engineer a, a campaign plan that puts you in a good position to win.
Please.
And that would be, it sounds like you've been, you said you've been working with districts for the last ten years or so. How long have you guys been around and if you could tie that into the state's success rate? The, we, I have been in the industry in my thirty-second year. So been in the industry thirty-second year. I say I'm one of the founders of Nexus. We are in our thirteenth year. But we've been, again, been in, in the industry over, over three decades. The, the overall success rate on, on referendum, I mean, I guess I'm not quite sure, you know, the historical average is fifty-seven percent. The, there was a number of years there where it was passage, passage rates were running in the seventy, seventy-five, you know, almost eight, eighty percent range. The last couple of years, it's pulled back to more of that historical average of in that fifty-seven percent range. Now there's a ton on the ballot this April, a lot of operating, so, and, and, and Wisconsin. And Nexus currently works in Minnesota, Wisconsin and North Dakota. Operating levies have been around much longer in, in the state of Minnesota. But what was an interesting, and, and I've worked in, in all three states, I live in Milwaukee. What's interesting in Wisconsin is right, wrong or indifferent, typically. Capital referendum passed at a much higher rate because the public is going to pay for bricks and mortar, but not more money for staff again, right or wrong, that's just kind of been the, the trend. Wisconsin has bucked that trend and, and operating levies have, have, have been surprisingly successful here. I, I think people understand that, you know, funding hasn't kept up with, with inflation. And, but we'll, we'll, we'll see kind of where that goes long, long term. And, and by the way, we provide assistance. Our focus is, you know, obviously on the capital side, but we've got many, many of our clients that are marrying operating levies with capital. And by the way, we provide assistance. Our focus is, you know, obviously on the capital side, but we've got many, many of our clients that are marrying operating levies with capital referendum. Or they're just asking for our assistance on the operating side as well. So we do them both.
Andrew.
Thank you. So. I guess I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out and there's. Obviously, there's no, no problem that you make money. That's that's what you do. But given that you're there's, there's certain upfront costs that are never billed if it's unsuccessful. And then there's. So. Something has to pay you. So how can you just tell me a little bit more of how I think.
Sure, no, very fair question. So. We keep track of our time on a time and expense basis throughout the development of the project and we itemize everything. If you want to see it, you can see it. And that gets rolled into the the cost of phase three. It just ends up being a line item in in phase three. So we recover our costs there. And then we provide the professional services that that would be associated with any school construction project. So. Architecture, engineering, construction management, commissioning. That again, that are associated with any school construction project, all of the and we do those at market rates. We won't be the cheapest. We definitely won't be the most expensive. We're right down the middle. Our goal is to provide high quality services at reasonable rates. And then the real key is because we aren't self performing any of the construction work. We are hard bidding everything and and breaking it down into multiple. Work scopes. We're finding that we are literally driving fifteen to twenty percent of the construction cost out and that's that is that's documentable. Is that helping? We we make our money on on the professional services aspect of the project. So. Planning, design, construction management, commissioning.
Okay, so we we know that we would pay six and a quarter architectural eight point nine five engineering up upfront. No.
That would be.
We know in advance that it'll be those four numbers. Okay? If we went out to, if we. If we went out to bid, we might or might not get some of those above or below those numbers, maybe. But it wouldn't come with the but you're offering services upfront that will never be billed if it doesn't pass. So that's good for us. Okay? And then presumably. You're guaranteeing us six and a quarter and eight point nine five and two and a half and two and maybe you're. Bidding aggressively and making some money there too, which is okay.
Well, and and we're we're self performing some of those, some of those professional services. We are self performing. And then we also have, but we don't do everything. So we do have sub consultants as well. But but yes, we have a little bit. We have a reasonable markup on those services, you know, built into those numbers. Yes.
I'll just revisit real quick, Andrew. What Mike said about the fifteen to twenty percent savings, we see that consistently. Across projects as we've looked at that over the last five to seven years. It's amazing how consistent it is, but if you if you do the quick math, even if you're very conservative about it on. A program like you're potentially talking about here in Green Bay, we're talking potentially twenty million dollars. In savings. So and we don't say that lightly. We know that's a big number, lots of zeros. But we wouldn't say it if we didn't see it consistently on the projects that we program manage.
Just as a quick. Kind of add on to what Kevin's saying. The prices skyrocketed, historical inflation, construction inflation over the last fifty years averages just short of five percent. And. In the spring of twenty twenty one, it shot up like thirty percent overnight. And and it isn't unique here. It's all throughout the the Midwest. And we had a number of projects, most notably one was in Wausau, hundred and twenty million dollar referendum, so comparable. And the referendum was the dollar bonds were were put together before the the price increase caught the entire industry off guard. And that project, you know, kind of the the ship had already sailed. And we're very proud to say that we are within. If you've been paying attention to school construction projects around the state, they're all twenty five, thirty percent over budget or schools were raising the budgets, et cetera, et cetera. We were able to maintain the scope in Wausau and we are nearly done with all the bidding on it and we're within a couple percent of budget. And so again, in the the now retired CFO, Mr. Bob Test is he's become a real believer and he has seen it of because he's tracked the cost himself. And he's like, the only way you guys did this was our plans and specs were very, very tight. And again, we got huge bid coverage on all our projects.
Brian.
I assume this would also open up some time for our staff that. Work on this a lot that we can allow them to focus on. The big plate of things that we already have them doing. So you would work in conjunction with our staff and our PR department and stuff like that, but it would. Allow them to open up on some of the other many things we ask them to do.
A lot of our clients view us as adjunct members of their staff that we have a very close working. Relationship. We never forget that we're guests, but it definitely the idea is your staff all has has day jobs. This is our day job. It's what we do all day, every day. And as a company, the only thing we do is schools all day, every day, sometimes twenty four seven.
Yeah, it was interesting, Brian, that you bring that up because when we had our first meeting with the district and it was a good conversation. We all just kind of brainstormed and thought through ahead of time. There's about a dozen. I'm not telling you something you don't know, but there's about a dozen. Major things you're asking of your admin team as part of this process, above and beyond what they would typically do on a daily basis. So. That was music to our ears. We deal with that all the time with districts, so.
We've been asking our teachers to, we've been advocating to get things off their plate, our support staff, everything else. And I mean, this. Seems like it would help continue with that goal.
I couldn't agree with you more. I think we ask a lot from our staff and this is a this year is going to be incredibly busy for us. So I'm really glad we're exploring this. Go ahead, James.
So I just want to make sure I understand there are terms in here that I need to make sure. Construction management, right? So you talked of a big plan and I think that in two weeks we'll be taking a decision. That there would. Be no opportunity for bidding out like the general contractor per project. That goes away. You are basically the general for all the projects or am I misunderstanding? Construction management.
A couple of things. One is. The 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 general contract contractor, if you will, provides like construction management services and then the general trades, which are concrete carpentry, things of that nature. Okay? What we do is we provide that construction management service. We believe that the most cost effective, most flexibility or most flexible way for schools to do it is then. To break down all of the the work scopes. So we're break it down to the general trades, mechanical, et cetera. So then your general would be providing the trades that they self perform, but not the project management. But you would, if that makes sense to you, because you're separating the two. Right? If you wanted, we have had some clients say that, you know, we. We don't want to break them down quite so much. You know, we could either have a one hard bid general or maybe we have triple prime or you have general mechanical electrical. So that there's different options there that we can. Can talk with you about the pros and cons once we 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 we. Get get to that point, but the real key is you're separating. The management of the project from the actual performing of the work. When we do that. During construction, when there's a change order or what have you. You know that because we don't have a horse in the race, we're self performing the work. When we're giving you our our guidance on it, it's objective. It's what's in your your best interest. And it doesn't only come from potential adds to a project, but sometimes contractors come up with with ideas on how to save money. And they come forward and say, you know, you could save fifty thousand dollars by doing this. And a couple of things. One is we want to make sure that whatever this is. Is in the district's long term best interest. That's number one. Because people can look at it and say, hey, we'd save fifty grand. It's like, yeah, but you know, two years from now, you it might be a bad decision. The second thing is. Is it worth fifty grand or a hundred? Okay, and because again, because we're separating those disciplines, now you have an educated advocate on the district side.
So I think you answered my question. It was there's not another layer of. Ease underneath your fees on the the planning.
Oh, sorry, were they jumping on? Yes, there is. There is not a, there is definitely not another added layer. Okay?
My my second question is. Josh introduced this as a very odd presentation because there's not a dollar amount, right? Associated with this. How can you communicate? Typical or average costing of this, you know, the acquisition of capital, right? The referendum because. I see our needs as multifactorial, right? There's, we don't exactly, we haven't decided the question. Right? Or the how big that that referendum dollar amount would be. And I think we would be seeking, you know. Advice if you if you perform services around polling around trying to determining appetite and where that sweet spot is. So. Knowing that there's a lot to do, I'm concerned with not really having an estimate of what we're looking at as far as a cost for that servers.
It's, I always tell people that you tell me exactly what you need us to do and I'll tell you exactly what it's going to cost, right? Okay? And but the key is we we know that I mentioned early on that there aren't many scenarios we haven't seen. I'm sure we haven't seen them all, right? But we know enough to know every situation is different. And when you're working through these, especially when you're talking about school closures, the boundary changes, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of adjusting that's going to have to be done along the way. There's polling and it might be a couple of rounds of polling. There's, you know, numerous forms of community engagement, et cetera, et cetera. So we know all the types of things, but we don't know exactly what's needed here. Okay, so that's where it's hard to say it. But what I can share with you is. Again, we track everything on a time and expense basis. It's very common. I think this is what you're looking for is. It's kind of the rule of thumb and I've heard other consultants say the same thing that it's common that kind of the development costs on a project can run. One half to one percent of the total project budget. So if it's a hundred million, five hundred thousand to a million. And now there would be some economies of scale here. Okay, now there's a lot of complexities here because the nature of the work, a lot of work's got to get done in a short period of time. There's a lot of. Political work, communications work that that needs to be done. But you would still have some economies of scale, but what we've done, we worked with with Josh and said, what if we did this? What if we cap, we'll do things on a not to exceed basis and we'll cap phases one and two. At I think it was two hundred and forty thousand, so it'll be a little less if the numbers have thrown out of a hundred and fifty million, I don't maybe higher, maybe lower. We yeah, exactly. We have no idea, but but just from my half a half a percent to one percent, if we're at a. Two hundred and forty thousand, you're at less than a quarter of a percent is what I'm trying to get you. Yes, and it's capped. So. And if it's if we spend less than that, great, because keep in mind. Our approach is is very self governing. In that we want to spend money and make investments wherever it makes sense because we're doing it at risk. Okay, so we know, you know, this makes sense to spend money on. This doesn't. This makes sense to, you know, do it really well. And yet at the same time, we're not going to spend money frivolously because again, we're at risk. And so it's kind of self governing that we're going. Spend our money, which ultimately is the district's money is as wisely as we can. But at the end of the day, the idea is find a plan that we get the public to support.
Good, James.
So I appreciate actually working off a percent of project base because that's something that I can then compare to. You say that your fifteen twenty percent is is documentable, right? I'd really like maybe if over the course of the next week or two, you know, kind of how you derive that number is presented because. You know, if we're really able to get to a a referendum ask. That we feel comfortable is. At a bargain or representative of those kind of savings. Yeah, you spend money to save money, right? And so I understand that concept. So I would be really interested in understanding the. Documentable aspect of that saving.
Actually, I have a question for Josh. I think this would be for you, Josh. So is it anything about this arrangement that would interrupt? Our. Historical commitment to hiring local. As local as possible contractors.
Well, I really don't think so. I mean, when it comes down to it, we're. They would be bidding it out and local contractors are most likely going to win. It's very unlikely. Like gravel company from California is gonna gonna come in and outdo one of the local guys, right?
It's just something we've always been kind of proud about committing to.
That's a great question, Laura, and every community you can imagine we go to has a similar priority. So we very much support that. This may add a little bit to that. On answer your question, Josh was kind enough to mention the fact that we're CISA purchasing preferred partner. A little background on that. It took about a two year period, but they thoroughly vetted all the major firms around the state that nobody really does what we do. And I say that. Completely honestly, nobody does really what we do, but all the folks that were in planning, architecture, construction management, you name it. And ultimately, they did select us as their exclusive partner for that. Because every single district in the state is their client. So in a sense. It's local, but it's on a statewide level too, and that's why you see us do so much work in Wisconsin.
Our bidding process. It's. You'll see, you know, to the extent the district wants, you'll see all the bids. And we they're all, it's all done electronically now, but it's basically an electronic lockbox. So you can see that when they came in, so there's no tampering. And again, we it behooves us to award to locals as well. And so again, we we have no preferred contractors. We pride ourselves again on having very tight plans and clean plans and specs. That every contractor can bid fairly on.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Are we good? All right. Again, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
This is an unusually dense.
Yes, absolutely. But it was worth the wait. Thanks for taking.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're going. Back to B. And that's, I think the key you're gonna do that. Okay.
We will be bringing the four point one two percent cost of living increase to the board next Monday. Quick turnaround on board meetings this month is a reminder because the following is spring break. This will bring our educators' base salary to over fifty thousand dollars, which allows us to be competitive.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions or discussion about that? All right. Next is the review of Board of Education compensation. Last year, we decided to not do the eight percent cost of living raise for Board of Education in light of our. Quite scary. Budget deficit. I'd like to just kind of open the floor now and ask people how they feel about. Either going back to kind of normal. Course of events where we would get the same raise or if you would feel like you would like to take a pass this year. Go ahead, James. Oh, Andrew.
Yeah, I, you know, in a situation where there's going to be potentially. Three board members and where we want to have. You know, this is, if you look at where we stand in compared to city council, county board. And that we have. and that we have far more of a workload than county board, and I think you could make the case of at least this year of it being close to, close to city council, which pays, which more than with committees and everything, okay? I think we should, I I think it was good to, I think it was good to skip a year because we did accelerate. We had three years of kind of catching up, but I would propose that whatever, um, you know, disregard the disregard the eight from last year, and if it's whatever the cost of living is, we would do exactly that for the board, would be my suggestion, especially keep in mind that we are deciding for at least two people who won't be on the board, and I also think we should keep, um, it should be effective, you know, after the, uh, election, or whatever month we usually ended effective for.
It would be, yeah, yeah, July one, yeah. Just like, just like all the other, all the staff. So, okay. Anybody else want to share their views on this?
Yeah, I I'm of the opposite opinion. I I view this as a stipend, and um, a cost of living increase on this level of stipend is is not significant. Um, and I would rather, um, you know, at points in time, change the stipend. Um, you know, to reflect, uh, whether it's keeping it with, um, city council or whatever, but oh, I just, I I see cost of living, um, increases as probably an ineffective way of of changing the the general, um, position of our stipend. Um, and that I, that's just my position on it. I I'm flexible, but um, four point one percent or whatever of such a a small stipend doesn't seem like a something that would entice or or, um, make much of a difference for a prospective board member, right? Um, so I I wasn't here when we pinned it to, um, cost of living. I wasn't engaged in those conversations. I know that it had been a while, and so not having that auto increment um, does call the the board to take specific action to change its own stipend, and that may be what you're trying to avoid. Um, it's just my opinion.
Historically, we, there was quite a long period of time, years, where there was no increase at all. What, Andrew, was it like, like twenty years or something? That there was no increase? It was a long time. And so when we finally, a couple of years ago, decided to kind of bring it up to, up to date.
Yeah, there, for a while, it was, well, for a while, there, when I was first on the board, there was a strange situation of thirty-five dollars per meeting, but the three, so your three work session night meeting was a hundred five dollars, but then your full board meeting session was thirty-five dollars. But then all the, so we kind of just said, you know what, four hundred would be a little bit of a increase since it's been thirty-five dollars forever, but then it stayed at four hundred until uh, twenty, till the second time I was on the board, I think. So then it went up to, I think, uh, went from something happened over, I think, a three-year process, and but it's been there for a while, too. So I guess another thought that we have, we did go from seventy-two hundred to seventy-five hundred, that actually lines up very, it's a round number that happens to be very close to the the cost of living. I guess my point being that even though it might be due for, if if we said we weren't going to do it last time, um, that's, that's fine. I don't think we should catch it up this time, but I don't think it, I don't think it's makes sense to do nothing for two years in a row when the cost of living has gone up twelve percent.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in? It's your chance, Nancy. Yeah, um, all right. Well, we have a week to to think about it. Go ahead, Brian.
I think, Andrew, I've got to compliment you for taking, I I don't want to say taking the initiative on this, but this being on an election cycle to take that position, I think is very courageous of you and a very reasonable spot on there. So thank you for, uh, being the first person to speak on something that could be very, you know, we're talking about ourselves on here, so thank you.
I think it's, um, it's not a bad opportunity right now to talk about what what is required of this role, um, the enormous amount of time um, that people put into it. It's, um, it's, it's not, it's, it's a big thing to commit to, and I, um, and I I I think that by bringing it up as we did recently, um, up to a a much higher level than it was, uh, shows respect for the fact that it's, it's, uh, even though this isn't a salary, it is technically a stipend. It, um, it shows people that, um, that the role has value. And, um, I don't know, I, and that people who might be considering running, um, understand that, um, that the, that the, the stipend, you know, reflects a, a more than, um, passing commitment. Go ahead.
Having taken this position as an educator, I know a lot of, I have a lot of background knowledge on how education works, and for someone to come into this and the the technical knowledge of a pretty unique situation is tremendous. So, um, again, for people possibly coming in, there's, there's a lot of work. I'm always impressed with how some of our board members are really absorbing this and and getting the information and the amount of time that they're putting in on that. So it's, there's a lot of technical stuff with this, so.
Well, I think our agenda tonight is a good illustration. Yes, it's an unusual agenda. Um, it reflects a huge amount of of work over many months from our staff and to to come and deliver it to our board, um, in a way that we can digest and make good decisions on behalf of, you know, nineteen thousand students and, um, a lot of, you know, thousands of staff members as well. I mean, it's, I don't know, I think it illustrates the, uh, what's required. It's not, um, it's not a a light lift. So, so anyway, we have a week of people want to, you know, take some time and think about it. Um, but we will take a vote at our next meeting. So, okay. Everybody to move on? Okay. Um, contracts, Vicky, Dee?
Okay, per state statute, next Monday, we will be bringing teacher contracts to the board. This isn't typically a work session agenda item. That was my mistake.
Oh, okay. Any discussion?
Is there anything I should know?
Okay.
No, ma'am.
All right, then, um, if we're ready to move on, then, um, we're gonna, we're gonna go into these job descriptions, I believe.
Right, thank you. And there's going to be a team, uh, joining at the table, David, Melissa, Amy Jaikle's been online virtually, um, and I believe Mike Fries will be joining us. This is our ongoing cycle of updating job descriptions, and it also includes two proposed positions.
Do you suppose we could take one of those positions, um, and let Ms. Ingrid go home? Is it possible? You're good? All right, all right. Yeah.
No, she she loves this.
She loves this stuff? Okay.
And Amy, are you there? Yep, there she is. Okay, um, why don't you go ahead and talk us through what you have on the document?
Sure, um, these are job descriptions that have not made it in front of the board since we did our uh, staffing study a few years back. Um, they're very much just updating to reflect the change, changes that have happened in our staffing structure. Um, a lot of very basic things like who somebody reports to. Um, and then as well as to reflect the ongoing changes as technology changes, the jobs need to match that.
Thank you, Amy. And then, um, David, Associate Principal.
Thank you, um, as I came to you about a month ago with a proposed, um, principal revision to the job description, which was approved. Um, so too, the associate principal job description aligned with the, um, evaluation criterion framework and positioned to identify the associate principal really in partnership with the principal as an instructional leader in the building. Those are the shifts that you would see described in that.
Hang on just a second, Lynn. Oh, go ahead.
Can we ask a question of each one as they talk about them, so we don't have to try to remember all this? Um, so I'm, I remember the principal one, and did you combine? Did you also have, I have three that you combined at that time, just recently?
Thank you for reminding me of that. The other, the other feature of the associate principal one is that it's a universal one, um, that would apply for elementary, uh, middle or high school. Yeah, thank you. So the 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 associate principal one, um, is a, is a combined one.
And what, now that you're combining them?
I think it's as simple as the fact that there's one set of professional standards to be an administrator, and then so it's kind of a professionally standards-based job description.
Okay, Melissa?
Thank you. Um, we have had an opportunity to, um, look at how we are working with the Human Resources Department with respect to streamlining, um, discrimination situations where that are, we have staff on staff, staff on student, student on staff, student on student. And historically, Human Resources has taken care of the staff end of of claims. Title IX was revised to include staff on staff discrimination, and Abby is the Title IX coordinator. Sometimes what starts out as potentially a Title IX allegation may not be a Title IX violation, but it could be sex discrimination. And so we are proposing to really just house all of the discrimination allegations in, um, with Abby's job description. She already does student discrimination and Title IX, so this would just be adding in staff discrimination.
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa.
Go, go ahead, Brian.
Would that be similar to how other districts do that? I I I guess I'm asking, is there a concern with that shift as far as, um, like supervision, or, you know, with more dealing with coworkers as opposed to students?
So Abby will be guiding the discrimination investigation process and determining whether discrimination occurred. That will, it will then, we work very closely with Human Resources, that will then flip back to Human Resources, and Human Resources will determine whether there warrants discipline. So Abby's not making the the disciplinary recommendations that is going to stay with Human Resources.
Okay. All right, uh, a proposed new position, Director of Engagement and Inclusion in the Superintendent's Office. This position reflects continued efforts to activate the Board of Education commitments to equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. And I'd like to read to you a little bit about the purpose. The Director of Engagement and Inclusion is a leadership position that serves as a liaison between community governmental agencies and other internal and external partners in district and district schools. The Director of Engagement and Inclusion provides leadership in systemic equity that leads to improvements in educational outcomes for all students. The main function of the position is to foster a culture of community and belonging within and across schools and our organization as a whole. Um, this position would serve on the Superintendent's Cabinet, and I'd like to share with the board that we have someone in an interim position serving in this role right now, and she's with us tonight. Uh, Ingrid Parker-Hill, if you could join us for a moment? Ingrid's been in the district for, how many years, Ingrid?
Eight.
Eight years, serving as a family engagement coordinator. You wanted to talk a little bit about the work?
Please. Put your thing on. Yep. The face, hit the face.
Okay.
There you go.
I can do that.
Yeah.
This is my fifth day. Um, the work is, um, we have a lot of work to do. But I feel like I am up for the challenge. That is the reason why I decided to take the position. Um, I knew what I was getting into, and so I wanted to bring our organization along with our community together to continue to build that bridge.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Ingrid? Go ahead, James.
How does it differ from the work that you're doing now, what you were doing before you took this job? I mean, what what do you see as expanded scope of your responsibilities?
Okay, I'll get it, I'll get it. That's a great question. Um, one of my joys is to be able to build community. This allows me to be able to do that freely. Uh, being out, building those relationships is key in order to, uh, move our organization along. Um, last night, I think, I think my best at night, and, uh, last night I was thinking about the song uh, that I, when I was a child, we used to sing in Sunday school, and it was called Good Better Best. And it goes, "Good, better, best, you never let it rest, till your good is better and your better is best." And I looked at, or I was thinking about our Venn diagram. And you have a family circle, you have a community circle, and you have a school circle. And when you think about one circle individually, that's a good thing. When you think about two circles intertwined, then that's a better thing. But when all three circles are intertwined, then that's the best, and that's what I want for our district and our community, for it to be the best that it can be.
Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. If if the board approves of this position, um, Ingrid's going to be as the interim through, uh, July one or June thirtieth, and then we would post and fill it permanently.
Okay. Thank you for hanging out with us all night long.
Ingrid and I rode the elevator up this morning together at seven forty-five, so.
Oh, yeah, it's been a long day, I know. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Ingrid. Yep, thanks. Okay.
We, uh, somewhat in conjunction and hand in hand here, we also have, uh, for consideration of uh, a director of recruitment and talent development that will be housed to the Human Resources Department. Um, we have continued to monitor the state of the profession when it comes to education, educators, administrators. There are many fantastic individuals within our organization that may be seeking career opportunity development. Uh, there are individuals in our community that are interested in opportunities to become educators or eventually become administrators. And, um, as you know, uh, we do pretty comprehensive internal and external recruiting, both locally and regionally within the state, and now this year also some national efforts. And speaking frankly, uh, the well is kind of dry in this collective space nationally. Um, the number of graduates with education certifications is very, very thin compared to where it was when, when, I almost said when Brian and I started. So I'll say when I started, I don't want to speak, but it used to be dozens, if not hundreds, of applicants for positions. And i- if you may recall from last year's, um, recruitment retention presentation, the state of Wisconsin's Ed Prep program reports show that there are critical shortages in every single department area. Um, and just, we are struggling to build that pipeline and sustain it, and we need to reallocate resources in order to give that the sort of full-time attention that it deserves. I'll give you one small data point. Actually, I'm going to give you two data points relative to this. One of them is, as you may recall, Marie Vista serves as our educator effectiveness coordinator. She works with our student teachers, she works with uh, a lot of our universities, uh, and she works with a lot of our brand-new teachers, runs the mentoring program, and, um, And we have 35 hires this year alone who are currently enrolled in the American Board Program, which is the only externally-approved program in the state right now that allows somebody to alternatively get licensed. It means that those 35 individuals are working full-time jobs, learning all the curriculum, learning to do the work, also being asked to prepare and study and pass high-stakes tests in order to keep their teaching license. And to see that, that's, you know, that's two whole pages of individuals, and there's one Marie, and there's 35 of them, right? Within our current ranks, we have educators that are interested in becoming administrators, and we have admin interns. We have teacher leaders, program support teachers. What is the pathway to be considered a future administrator? And so all this work is very much aligned, it's done in collaboration. But we appreciate any consideration you would give to this, this role, as I believe it is vital for the relative health of the organization when it comes to our educator-administrator pipeline. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Brian?
I would envision that this position would work closely with our partners that, whether it's GBA, or WEAC, or NEA, as far as professional development that they offer, working with them for board certification programs, and other, just having the same vision for it.
Absolutely. There are some, you know, identified essential functions that would be specifically, they would be in charge of and would be held responsible and accountable for as deliverables, but a lot of these essential functions are cross-departmental collaboration in concert with and addressing things that we need to keep connecting the dots. So you'll see connections with the work that Ingrid is stepping into right now, connections with Amy Fish, connections with Lori Blakesley, connections with our GBEA, connections with our principals, absolutely, 100%.
Go ahead, James.
Um, Mike, remind me, we purchased a new HR system, and I cannot remember if we purchased the talent module or recruiting module. Good, so we have systems that this person will be able to come in and operate in service of that role, right?
Yes, that's correct. We are in the meetings right now, weekly, building out those modules in the the preparation for implementation phase, right? And that would include, this person would serve, in some senses, depending on the timing, in charge of showing our administrators and our staff how to find a position that's listed on the internal, as well as how to, you know, that mechanism, absolutely.
I have a question. To your knowledge, do other districts our size have a corresponding position like this, or something comparable? I'm, I'm assuming that since the, the supply of, of people is dwindling, that the competition is fierce.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, they may be called something slightly different. We worked real pretty hard, I worked pretty hard with, with David and Vicki in particular, to make sure that there's alignment in the work, and it's not, we don't want somebody else to go, wait, that's my job, why is that, right? So we're making sure we're coordinating, so other districts may have it positioned ever so slightly differently. But we meet once a month with the Department of Public Instruction for licensing, and the five largest school districts in the state, and in testing out, okay, where you house that role, where do you house that? It, it was pretty evident that these other districts have a particular focus in this area.
Okay.
I'll add that most recently, I came from a district where I was one of two individuals who shared this role. That's how critically necessary it was.
Okay. Yeah, Andrew, then, Brian?
Are we on just the specific one, or the overall package, or is this the last one, so it's the same thing? Okay. So just to, just to clarify here, now we had earlier, an earlier presentation about three executive director positions that will come off of the table of organization, and we have two director positions. I agree that these are critical, and I'm glad to have them, and I'm glad we're filling them. So that would be, at least with things talked about, not, not that one of the changes happened yet today, but it's announced that it's, it's happening. So that is a minus one central office, am I correct? Or am I, or am I missing, so, I mean, is it a true minus, is it a true minus one central office position, or not really because of other changes that happened that I'm not thinking about?
Yeah, I just want to confirm the math that I think you're referring to. So when, when I shared earlier the elimination of the layer of executive directors, there's implications for three positions in that. And, and what you heard shared here was two director positions that don't currently exist. Is that, am I tracking with?
That is minus one position then, in central office. Yeah, mi- minus one net position, and it was executive directors, and these are directors, so a little bit of savings there. I think that's, that's important, and you know, I, there will have to be additional central office savings, and the, I will have to see those if I'm going to vote for school closures, there'll have to be some additional ones, but this is not to take anything away from, I think these two positions are critical, and I like the fact that we're adding these two.
Well, so we're not backfilling Vicki's spot. She's moved into a new role, and we're not backfilling that.
But I don't know that, I mean, whether or not to have a, I guess I look at three, three positions coming the table of organization. I don't know necessarily where that up, I, I don't believe we should take deputy superintendent off the chain of organization right now, even if we're not filling it right now. But the, the executive director position, there's a difference between coming off the table of organization and not, not filling it. So if we're going to put two things on the table of organization, then at least two things need to come off, which we've done.
Okay, any, Brian?
In regards to recruitment, and especially making sure that we have a goal of making sure that our staff represent our community. I, I really like how these two positions are coming together. I mean, nationally, statewide, i- it's always been, it's, it's an ongoing challenge to make sure we can have staff reflective of our community. And I think the fact that we're going to work to make the community connections gives us not, and a great opportunity to recruit within, within our, within the city, within the district for some of those positions, and, and to continue to hopefully grow our own and those positions, so, or in any position within the district.
Thank you. We've had a great proof of concept with some of those things through the work of Amy Fish and partnerships. I appreciate that, so that is definitely the, the objective here.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I think we can move on. Thanks. Thanks. All right, I think if I've got it right, I think our next is F, the Clean Energy Advisory Committee update. Welcome back, Josh.
Thank you. So this advisory committee was created earlier this year by charter, and part of the charter requires a report to the board in the subsequent board meeting. This is the first subsequent board meeting. After March 5th, when that group met for the first time, I have attached the minutes slash notes from that meeting. I know several of you were, were able to observe, and actually Brian is a, is a member of that committee or work group. It's a really good group of people, really, really knowledgeable and thoughtful group of people, excepting one. Yeah. But we, we reviewed energy projects since May of 2020, because the resolution was created in May of 2020 and references a baseline and a reduction relative to that baseline. So the, there you will see a list of projects that impact our energy consumption. We talked about the community function of purpose by reviewing the resolution, the charter, and the website. We discussed the fact that the charter indicates that our immediate focus should be producing a report to the board by December of 2024 that outlines how to get us to our 2035 goal. We talked about the need to, to have more focused work groups within that committee, confirmed with Melissa that that's just fine. And, and the group clearly had a desire to involve students. We have two excellent students as permanent members on that committee, but there are potential other ways to to involve learning in this process. So our immediate, our immediate tasks include using, getting an account for the Energy Star Building portfolio, which I've done. We need to fill that up with data to determine what our baseline of consumption is, so that we can measure our progress toward our goal. The committee also gave me several potential districts to contact. I did hear back from Sun Prairie today, they've got over 50% of the square footage, and Sun Prairie is geothermal. Over 50% of their square footage, so they've got, I think, four elementaries and a high school. New high school, yeah. So they might have two geothermal high schools now, actually, because I think their old one was geothermal as well. So Iowa City, which undertook a lot of geothermal projects, and then Milwaukee Public Schools is working with various partners. They, they seem to be kind of on a similar point in their journey to us. So we are meeting again on April 16th, 2024, as required by the charter, to be at least every alternative month, I think is the way it's worded, so. Really looking forward to it. If you get a chance, please, please check it out, because it's a, a really good group of people that are there for the right reasons that, that you've assembled.
Good, Brian.
Often, it seems like education competes with neighboring districts, and I may have forwarded this on to a neighboring district, because I think the work we're doing and have done, obviously, it benefits us, it benefits the earth. But I've was very pleased to share this with people that I know around of saying, like, these are tangible things that we have done and are continuing to do, and it, it's able to be done, so.
I have to say that my impression was that some of the people at the table were a little surprised at how much work we've already done, and how much progress has already been made. And I have to agree with you, it's a great group of people. The students seemed undaunted by, you know, were happy to speak up and give their thoughts quite freely, which is always a, a nice thing. Actually, afterwards, I thought maybe it, it might be helpful to have a couple more people on the committee, especially if you're going to have breakouts under various different categories of work, but it's not something we needed to necessarily discuss tonight, but I mean, it's a good size now, but it, I don't know if you ever thought about maybe adding a few more people to help with load? But, but I don't, Josh, you did a great job of leading that group, and I'm really excited about it, and from what I've seen so far, there's every reason to think that we'll be able to make a, just really gen- genuine progress.
I, I do want to get on the record, and this was discussed there as well, that the district has always been very, very considerate of energy conservation, energy efficiency. However, being efficient with our energy is not going to get us to the carbon neutrality goals set forth by the board. So putting in LED lights is important. We also can't do it without doing that, but ultimately, we're going to need to look at renewable energy sources in or, in order to meet those ambitious goals.
Questions, anybody? Okay, I'm really excited about this group. I, I think I've pretty much told everybody that a couple different ways, but it feels good to finally form this, this committee after it was derailed by COVID, and yeah, solid work, so.
Next meeting, April 16th, here at the district office in room 138, 6 o'clock.
Excellent, okay. I think you're up next, too. We're doing Chromebooks.
Oh, that's the lovely Amy.
Oh.
If she's still awake. There she is.
Hey.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody.
We're going to talk about Chromebooks now.
Yes. Yeah, so you'll see, we're looking to move forward to a refresh plan of getting devices out to students when they're in first grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade. And then they would carry that Chromebook until they hit the next grade level, or the next refresh. And then the devices that fall off of that refresh plan would go to our 4K and Kinder Kidos, the best of the best, of course. We know that our Chromebooks are set to last five to eight years, so I'm confident that we will be putting good devices in front of our littles. So the, the purchase is a request for 4,285 devices. We went to RFP with CDW winning the lowest price bid. Yeah. So are there any questions that I can answer, things I can clarify?
Go ahead.
So the funding of this is from your budget, is there, this, was this not a qualifying purchase for use of Ezra funds?
Yeah, I'm sure it is a qualifying purchase for Ezra. That is something that I can discuss with Angie. If she'd like to move the dollars there, we absolutely can. I just want to get something into our budgets, that we have a refresh cycle, because previously, Chromebooks have always been purchased with additional funds of some sort. I think it was 1718, Josh, that maybe we did, like 13,000. And then 2122, we've finished that cycle with 6,500, but if, can talk to that a bit more, open?
Yeah, I, I, that is my recollection, although COVID kind of throws everything for a loop. I would just say that you, the one-to-one deployment model is here, and here to stay post-COVID, right? You're not getting that horse back in the barn. So you really, I would really strongly encourage these sorts of things to come out of the normal operational budget, because we need to plan in, in the future rather than grant funding it, but certainly it is an eligible expense if we need to offset other expenses.
Yeah, I, I'm good. I didn't realize what you were trying to do. So you wanted establish a long-term viable, you know, budget for replacement programs. Thank you.
Yep, that's correct.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, I think we're, next on the agenda is the turf at West.
Yes, and there is no attachment, because I don't have the recommendation in hand, but I know this is something that you're going to see next week, so I wanted to prepare you. We will have a recommendation from Rutler for a for a subcontractor for the turf. It's going to be, I believe, Midwest Sports Turf, who did the turf at both Preble and the Southwest Ballfields. They will not be the lowest bid, although it is below it. And the, the reason for that is the the tight timelines. We feel more confident going with Midwest, that they'll be able to meet our, our deadlines to, to get that field ready for competition for the fall.
Okay. Anybody have questions? All right, we're going to move on to policy and governance, and I believe it's Melissa and Lori. And David.
Thank you. Our first policy we're bringing tonight is a pretty substantial refresh and revisions to the web page management policy and the district webpage guidelines. Lori is bringing forward, going to be bringing forward a redo of our district webpage. And this policy and rule were last passed when there was a, a completely different purpose for a district website. And Lori has taken our, our website beyond And Lori has taken our our website beyond all of what we could have ever imagined it to serve and brought it for a new purpose. So the policy really needs to be updated and changed to reflect that new purpose and the presence of of our webpage. In addition to that, the Department of Ed and the various different compliance agencies of the federal government have taken a really hard look at ADA compliance of governmental pages. And we have gotten a complaint and have had to make a number of revisions to our webpage, which has just reminded us that it is so incredibly detailed and intricacies of what compliance is with the ADA, that we really need to shore up who can have webpages and what that's going to look like.
So when I read the policy, I went right there. And I, you know, was talking to Vicky earlier today about some indication that you're leaving our site, because when you're I didn't see in the policy that we had to handle external links a certain way. In my, in our role, we have a actual page that says you're leaving the district. Therefore, we we do not own the property you're going to. It will not necessarily be ADA compliant, whatever. That was one thing I didn't see in the policy, and I didn't know if it was something you wanted to address. And also, I don't know if we use any kind of cookies to set preferences or track or whatever like that. But I know that there's privacy legislation kind of trying to working its way through Wisconsin, and it may be an opportunity to establish a policy on the use of cookies and disclosing the tracking of users.
So I wasn't quite sure what you were talking about earlier today, but my, our new website provider is very efficient. So for people who don't know what James is talking about, so when you go to this school district's website and they ask you if you want to go to this link, that will take you to the Education Ohio Gov page. You click on that. It gives you this little box that pops up, letting you know that you're leaving, and it talks, and their purp- their purpose for doing it is for that accessibility piece. So when I, so I had reached out, because like I said, I I didn't really sure what you were talking about. But and so they, so this, the final site folks, a great conversation because they were kind of surprised. This is something we wanted to talk about, and they had a debate about, you know, is this necessary, not necessary? And I think they were kind of looking for, is this something the board would like us to to do? And so it is something that is possible for us to consider putting in there.
So the asking the board if we want to do it, I from a policy perspective, I I do think that we should protect our property and make sure that people know when they're on one of our properties and when they leave the implementation of that. Obviously, I don't know that the board should have a say in that. But I I do think that the ADA is really putting some teeth into that. And they're, you know, they they are enforcing compliance. I don't know how it hurts unless you come back and say it's going to require an expenditure of X and that's an unreasonable amount. So I would say that there's, the the conversation with our service provider would have to go to is this a project that would have a a non-trivial amounts all associated with exit?
Well, and the other thing that I wanted to go and look at, too, is I'm not sure if just putting that statement protects us from going, from directing people to another webpage that may not meet ADA compliance, right? My understanding is it doesn't, but I could be wrong and may need to and need to do a little bit of homework on that. Because we found out that just having a statement on our website saying that if you find that you can't get something the way you need it, you can reach out to our office and we will try to correct it. And that didn't stop an OCR complaint either, right? So like the person who identified the complaint went right to OCR, didn't check, didn't talk to us to say, hey, did you know this doesn't work in your website? We are looking at a tool this week, Thursday, that I'm kind of excited about. So right now, we use Monsanto on our website. And it allows people, so if you have dyslexia, you can change fonts, you can change color. So it's kind of trying to address different disabilities. And this new through Final Site, this one is supposed to correct it automatically for people so that it doesn't have to rely on us having caught everything, right? But one of the nice things about the new website is before anybody can save a page. So because we have lots of different web administrators, right? So departments administrate their department pages, schools do their pages. You might have individuals within the school, like athletics do the page. So you have to actually do an ADA check before it allows you to save the page, so that we're gonna hope that's gonna also address it. We're also, you're also gonna see a much leaner website because we just found that keeping PDFs up to date is really challenging. And so there'll be a far less pretty documents on our website because those are just too challenging, time-consuming to make sure that they meet the ADA requirements as well. So that so information will be on there in a much plainer format.
So it's 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 more important to me that in, I mean, do I want there to be an accessible website? Yes. If we're gonna be jettisoning valuable content because of compliance threats about OCR rules that were set up by an administration that wanted to trap and add that administration that set it up wanted to trap and hurt local governments, rope local governments into not putting stuff online at all, so they would have to be worried about the complaint. That's not how I want to live, I guess. I don't want to throw away important content that people use because of some compliance and complaints. I do absolutely want to address if someone legitimately is telling us we can't, I, we're having trouble using the website, absolutely.
I do not disagree with you, Andrew. Having heard the horror stories and taken that same position before having a complaint filed against us, I absolutely were, was in that same boat. Now, having lived through it and again, the level of detail and small minutia that we had to go through and things that never even were on the radar of our compliance organization that checked our site for us. We we can't do that. We don't have a choice. So unless we are going to be spending, Lori and I are going to be spending conference calls and complaint after complaint after complaint with OCR, because that's what it's going to result in.
And I would I would say to reassure you, Andrew, so the things that we took off were, you know, copies of newsletters. So it's it's things that the information is on our website in some other format, you know, our fact sheet. So you can find all the number of schools, you know, our demographics, all of that already exists on our website. It was just a you know, it was easy, it was mostly for our department, easy way to find our stuff, right? It was, it was listed, it was, it was located on the website. So I think we're not looking to eliminate important information that people need and want. I think what we're doing is saying, though, that there are times where we take that information, we put it in a different format to make it look nice for a handout for things like that. And we're gonna eliminate putting those things on the website because of the, just the time intensity to try to make those things ADA compliant.
I am really trying to understand what an ADA compliant website is. I never heard of that concept until just now. I've been doing some research and I see over and over every different, every place I look says it means it is perceivable, operable, understandable, and robust. Well, that really helps a lot. I I looked up OCR, I get an idea what that means. What does it mean to be ADA compliant, to have a website that is ADA compliant? Can you define that?
So I I'll give you the examples of what how we were not ADA compliant. There's a chat box, chatbot on our, right? So that has to be dynamic. So if someone is visually impaired and can't see, the website speaks to a person who's vigil visually impaired. The manner in which the what was that? Screen reader read that where that chatbot was and then prompted a person who would be visually impaired to do the next steps. Wasn't intuitive, is what OCR kept telling us. It's not intuitive, even though we believed that you still were able to access it in the way that our fantastic chatbot representative kept explaining it. They kept telling us it was not intuitive. And so we said, then tell us what intuitive is. And then they said, we're not gonna tell you what that means because we want you to be creative and we want you to problem solve your way through this. So here's the minimal requirements, but we're not gonna tell you how to get there. So we're still in conversations because the company that does the chatbot is committed to being compliant and really wants to be compliant, but they're trying to read the tea leaves from OCR as to how to get there. Is that, is that accurate, Lori?
Yeah, I give him a lot of credit because he asked for technical documents to describe what he needed to do. And and they said it without saying it, that basically he met the technical requirements. They just didn't like it, right? And so, I mean, so we've, so he's putting in a lot of time, money, and energy to try to to meet their standard that we don't know exactly what it is. So.
And and then we don't get released from the complaint until they are, they are happy with what they want it to look like without telling us what it's supposed to look like. And so then we're in this ongoing compliance with OCR.
So you were telling us how you're gonna change things on the new website, and that's gonna take care of it, do you think?
So I won't say he'll take care of it completely, right? I mean, that's, it's vigilance on our part as we move into the new website, which our plan is to go live June tenth because we wanted to be sensitive, right, to the changes of our schools and to make sure everybody still had websites and all that until we move into the summer. And so so our plan is obviously there'll be training that will go along with it for the people who are web administrators on. How do you make sure your PDFs are compliant? How do you make sure your webpage is compliant? A lot of it is things like, if there's a picture on your website, right, you need to define what the picture is, right? It can't just be boy in red shirt, right? Like, it's, it needs to say something so who's ever looking through it understands what the context of the photo is. There's some things that, like our logos, don't need to necessarily be alt text from the standpoint of there can be considered just a they're a feature of the page, but they don't add any value to the person trying to understand with the content on the page. But anything that's relevant to understanding the content needs to have definitions like that. So so, yeah, so I think we're gonna, we're gonna do some exciting stuff. I haven't really had a chance to talk to you about the website. One of the things I'm really excited about is, well, one of the reasons we left or we're leaving our current providers, we couldn't get the support. We needed to fix some ongoing issues that we've continued to have with it, such as the staff directory. That's just been a headbanger for years. But because we were getting a artificially low price for our hosting our website, it was hard to make the change to move to a what we actually needed to pay for our website. But with Final Site, it's gonna be, it's a much more video content type website. And so I think it's gonna be really exciting to see what people will be on our website and really get to kind of see what's happening in our schools in a much more visually interesting way. And so I'm excited about that opportunity.
So I don't think this is funny at all that, you know, what's what's going, it's fine if people are in good spirits about some irony around it, but if if we are being just jerked around by a federal agency like this, that's, that's not helping make our website more accessible. That is a power play, and don't we fight? Not not fight to not update the website, up update the website, but if we're getting these games played with us, then let's go to, let's go to our legislators, let's go over some, over some heads and do something about it. If they're playing this game of we're not, yeah, it's, or it's right, I don't like it, but I can't really tell you it's not right. Where's some anger about this? Where's some fight?
So that all existed, and the the short answer is they have a compliance guide that is approved. And that is what you have to follow. And within that compliance guide are the requirements and the minimums, but they will not tell you how to get there. So even though we believed it was compliant, even though our vendor believed it was compliant, they chose to interpret it as not being compliant within that guide that they have, which is essentially the recipe for how a website is ADA compliant.
But didn't, didn't you say there was at least one point where you're quite confident that you're quite confident that it is met and you're just being, you're just getting jerked around by some bureaucrat that wants to make Gbabs life miserable? There has to be, are there higher, are there higher levels? Are there, is there going above people's heads? Is there complaining against them that they are, that they are malfeasance on their part?
So I don't think it's malfeasance, and I don't, and I don't believe that it is they are doing this because it's some sort of fun thing that they 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 do for their job. They they have been very hospitable, they've been very wanting to to stay in touch and make sure that we're doing what we can. It it's just every school district who has been given a complaint has found themselves in the same predicament we have of wanting to be compliant but not sure how to get there. But we can, I I, we can discuss more, Andrew. I can give you some more information.
I might have missed it, but is there policy that all content will be available in a equitable fashion? So the example is that we have a a button or dropdown on our current website that allows you to visit a Hispanic version of the site or a Hmong version of the site. But it's not the same site. It is a subset of the the information. And per policy, I'd like to see that not be a thing anymore, that all accessible, everything is the same.
Yes, so that's not getting carried over to the new website. That was kind of a hangover from the last one. And I think when we made that switch, I didn't really understand, too, what the purpose was at that time, right? Because that, but but I think it was when we moved to School Messenger, I think that was the first time we had a website that actually was able to translate, right? And so it was kind of a hangover. And what we've noticed, too, is that it's not, it's definitely not equitable because they're not always updated at the same way, right? Because it's like people forget, oh, yeah, that form was on that page. And so, so and then we're also looking at, too. It's a part of our equity plan with human resources and legal. We all work together on some of that. Is that how do we move more of those forms to a web-based form versus a PDF form? So that families that don't have access to a printer don't run into not being able to fill out the form. And that way, too, it's automatically translated as a part of the website. And so again, then, and then there, and because our website is responsive, right? It's visible on your phone, it's visible on tablet, on on whatever kind of device you have. And so I feel like, hopefully, you agree, James, that sort of meets that need of really trying to make sure that everybody's seeing the same thing.
So is that a suggestion or is that in the policy? That you you have web forms versus PDF forms or that everything is translatable on the website? So if you put, there should not be an existence of just an English version of a PDF. There should be all of the languages that we support, or is that, you don't want that in policy and that's right now just your best practices and guidelines?
So I would say that right now, that would be very hard for us to to be able to do, right? So like, we don't have, I don't have translators in my department, right? Other than I've made sure that we always have a bilingual secretary, and in that role, that individual has been able to translate Spanish for us. But otherwise, I have to rely on the same translators as everybody else in the district does. And, right, and we don't have a lot. And so I would say, like, even the challenge it has been to be ready for tomorrow to have, you know, documents created by a consultant to get them translated has been a huge challenge, right? And so I worry that when I think about every department that creates documents, every school, like, I can't guarantee that every document that gets attached to our website is gonna be translated.
One thing that we have done, if we don't have the capacity to One thing that we have done, if we don't have the capacity to translate in every single language is we have included statements on forms that in in the four different languages, if you need assistance, please contact and then we include the individual who who should be contacted. So that is the, I don't have my agenda in front of me, but I'm assuming that's the great acceleration procedures. Okay. All right, I'm going to turn this over to David.
Thank you. Most noteworthy in this proposed revision is clarity on the timelines that are involved in the process of accelerating and also the timelines that are part of the appeal process. Standardizing those lengths of time from when words are escaping me right now. I'm sorry. Standardizing the, standardizing the length of time from when we begin testing or assessing a student for acceleration when a response is expected and what what the flow is of that process. Full disclosure on this, reading it with today's eyes tells me that by the time we put it before you for a vote, we need to examine some individuals who are involved in this process because they are named through our executive director team, which is will not be a part of a named role moving forward. So I caught that myself. I'll make sure that that gets adjusted for your review prior to voting on it next time. The other component of this is some windows of time where we will not assess for acceleration. This is, this is parallel construction with special education processes where we allow the student to be fully settled into the current grade for a window of 45 days before we would begin an assessment process that ultimately might lead to acceleration. Likewise, we address what could be an open cycle of acceleration was not found to be appropriate. I just want to be tested again. So we're, we're closing the opportunity to just have a non-stop, non-stop testing cycle by inviting the family or the staff to identify the student for acceleration a year after whenever a decision is made not to accelerate. So those guardrails are now built into this. And again, it's in the interest of the student being successful and the really important decision that is made when we choose to accelerate a student.
So I think we can do the next two at the same time. With the proposed change to the job description, we would, we need to rename the individual who is contacted first for the discrimination for Policy 511 as well as individuals who would be contacting for the, any potential claims regarding break time for nursing mothers. So we would revise those positions to identify the discrimination coordinator as the first contact and then the Director of Human Resources as the second point of contact.
So to your point about the continual cycle of retest, the wording that was added to the policy uses a 12-month period. Is it possible just to say next school year? Because if there is an appeals process that drives it into the second quarter or second semester, you know, the whole concept was there's legitimate windows for acceleration at the beginning of the year. But in the middle, just seems odd and and seems like it's interrupting a year's worth of curriculum. Can we just change that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that'll add to the clarity that we're trying to get out of the whole policy. Thank you.
Last one. Forward a minor revision to Rule 881.2 to revise the potential options for raising money for booster clubs to make sure that we are not charging dues or fees or any sort of participation costs in order for students to participate in our extra and co-curricular activities.
I just want to say, I think we did some very good work here tonight. Thank you. Thank you. To all the board members and all the people that presented and a lot of them are gone now, but it's just, I'm just going to put it out there in the universe that it feels good to be working on so many important things right now. So anyway, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.